Now.
Please, the host, Honorable Yunis and Honorable Omo and Wadomo.
Wadomo, can you indicate, indicate where you are, please?
Wadomo, they are the anchors.
Wadomo, can you speak so that I can see you?
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
Then, okay.
Well, my video is not up.
You can start your video.
You can start your video.
Wadomo, you can start your video.
You cannot start your video because it's disabled by the host.
You can, you have, you have co-host, you can start your video.
I don't know what's happening here.
Said to you, had you something to cover it before? So, go out and come in again. Go out and come in again, play off these settings. Go out of the Zoom, then come back again. Again. Alright, so we are live on air and
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Uh, is Wada Yunis co-hosted?
Yep, she is. She is, she has co-host.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So, we start with, um, let's play this, uh, message first. After then, we start the national anthem.
Mazi Sunny, I'm back now.
And stupidly will support them because they want to be as the president and you are all dying every day.
Okay, let me co-host you now.
You are all dying every day. Have you people reason to say that what is happening in Nigeria is bad? There is no way that Pa, First United States daughter will not be alive today. That is the price you pay for duplicity. That is the price you pay. That is the price you will continue to pay until you rise up and say enough is enough. It is up to you to do it. You did it during N S A S. You can do it again. Can you imagine Fulani people telling you if you remove Fulanis from Yoruba forest? Imagine Fulani telling you if you remove them from your ancestral lands, there will be war and you are panicking. And you have not asked yourself, why are they not saying something about the east? Why did they not say to Eastern Security Network? Why did they not say to me if you don't stop evacuating Fulani terrorists from the forest, there will be war? Because they know, they understand psychologically that you don't have what it takes to resist them. Do you know why Broni State is still alive? Why you still have the Kanadi people in Bronu today? Was because they resisted the Fulani centuries ago. You have to go back to history to understand how Nigeria came into existence. Fulani has been expanding from day one, from Senegambia, all the way from Senegambia. They've been expanding, expanding, expanding and now they are in Okiwu. All the way from Senegambia, they are now in Okiwu. And you're asking us to somehow fold our hands and keep quiet because of twenty twenty-three? Because one idiot is going to come out to become a president because of that rubbish? Because of that nonsensical notion we should fold our hands and wait until we are overrun by the Jangjagut from the Sahel? Is that how reasonable people think? Is that how people that wish to survive as a race? Is that how they reason? It is very, very shocking that some of you do not understand what the Fulanis have in store for you. Very, very soon it is going to happen and when it happens, your eyes will clear and about whom you will see it very clearly. I was warning you in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, they said he's a warmonger, he's a, he's a warmongering. I went to America and I told World Global Congress that this war you are fighting is going to come to your villages. They said, no, it's not going to happen. What is happening today? When Yoruba was supporting this, the dead idiot called Bukhari, did I not warn them? That this evil you are supporting will consume you. They never listened. They never wanted to listen. I P O B is a terrorist group, you're trying to divide Nigeria. But Mhethi Allah is not. People that you are calling bandits, have you heard anybody come out to say, please Bukhari? Since presidency is there defending terrorists in the forest, why don't you prescribe them? No, you cannot prescribe a Fulani group, never. And all of you, we are supporting evil when there is the prescribed I P O B, prescribed indigenous people of Biafra. These are Yoruba journalists writing junk. Every day they keep writing rubbish. Their land is under siege. Their land is under siege and the Fulani will take it, it won't take time. So I am here today to encourage them that they must stand tall and be very strong, resilient. That is what Fulani does, they control the media, they have well-paid consultants all over the world doing their bidding for them. They have that, uh, that woman at U N trying to, to, to lobby the world that everything is okay in the zoo called Nigeria. But you and I know that the zoo is not okay. You and I know the game plan of the Fulani and what are you doing about it? Nothing. Every day you read, you lament, you complain. Every day you read, you lament, that's all you do. That is all you do. You read, you lament, you complain, you do nothing about it. Your lives are being taken away from you, your forests are being occupied, your mothers are being raped, your daughters are being abducted and the whole national government presidency is supporting such people. And you're telling me that Nigeria is viable, sustainable? Is that what you're telling me? That somehow this corruption is sustainable, it is viable? It can never be. Because the more you stay in one Nigeria, the more you are inviting the Fulanis to take over your ancestral lands, take over your villages and to make life a misery for you. That is the end game, that is the outcome. If you doubt me, go and do a bit of research. Ask yourself, who are the Hausa people? Who are the Nupet people? Who are the Batshama people? All of these people were enrolled by the Fulanimat to the, to the Atlantic Ocean. And now they are Yoruba land, they are in their forests. They are in their forests. And who is going to drive them away from there? It's not the Yoruba youth. Forget about your, your useless governance, your elders are very strong. I love Yoruba elders, the way they behave, the way they talk, very, very strong. They said they support, uh, uh, Agredu. This governor from those state, they support him in what he's doing. People must come out to say that enough is enough. When you travel to the north, do you live in the forest in the north? The Ibo people are in Saban Valley in Kan. Are they living in, 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 uh, of course it's Hausa land, are they living in the forest? They came to the town, they work very hard, they build houses, they build mansions, they develop the entire place. Is that not what they do? What are Fulani people doing in our forest? Nobody can answer that question. They say that they're pastoralists. I want some of you who, some of you who have had your breakfast this morning, please go to your fridge or go to where you keep your, your beverages and you will see peak milk. Peak. Some of us, we are raised on peak milk. For how many years now? And you keep asking yourself, what is peak milk? Peak milk is mineral, the same, the same milk that the cows produce in Holland can be produced in the zoo. Tell me the country in the world aspiring to be a member of the U N Security Council where you move cattle from place to place? Are you people, are you people well at all? You so-called Nigerians, are you, are you normal in the brain? I'm asking you a simple question. Show me a country that aspires to be in the twenty-first century, moving cattle from place to place, tell me that grazing. Which country is that, please tell me? Some, all of you don't have any shame. When you have people, an entire presidency coming out to defend a very primitive, archaic agricultural practice, then you know you embrace this mess. You are in one almighty problem, I'm telling you. People are in a mess. The Holland that you get your peak milk from, do they move cattle from, from Rotterdam to, to, to Amsterdam? I'm asking you a simple question. That they produce the peak milk that you're drinking every blessed day. Why can't Fulani produce peak milk in, in, in Sukoto? Why can't they produce carnation milk in Kan? They have the cattle. Before the white man came, did you see any Fulani in your forest? All these people talking rubbish about movement of cattle and movement of, I'm asking you, before Britain came and handed over Nigeria to Fulani? Ask your grandfathers, please, or your grandmothers. Ask them. All this nonsense we are hearing today in this so-called one, I want to tell you the dangers of one Nigeria. All this nonsense you're hearing today about one Nigeria, Fulani in, in our forest, Fulani in our village, before the white man came, did you see Fulani moving their cattle all over the place? Did we not have meat to eat? They will answer these questions for you. Because sometimes in Africa, we don't reason very well. The way we reason is disjointed, it is disjointed. I don't, I can't understand for the life of me, why instead of them to waste all that money arming and keeping this Jangjagut arming Mhethi Allah to come and conquer you and I? Why don't they open a milk factory somewhere in the north and bring the milk down south? I'm sure, I'm sure southerners will buy.
Lord, the rising sun we love and cherish. We love and hope and all our brave heroes. We must defend our lives, oh, we shall perish. We shall protect our hearts from all our faults. But if the price is that far, oh, we hold dear, then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a consecrated nation. Oh, Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Still in our blood will count our freedom. The weapons stand that which and all that are free shall always be a part of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from misdeeds. And through the crucible unscathed we pass. When we are void, the wounds of battle to heal. We shall remember those who guide us. Then shall our children feel the glorious song. Oh, victory, we score all mine and all. Oh, God, protect us from the hill we fall. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to hear the human's call. To give and not to come the costly chain. Let those who rule to suffer with resoluteness. To make this climb a land of righteousness. Oh, hail be of fraud, land of the rising sun. We love and cherish. We have anquished our enemies. Oh, hail be of fraud. God bless be of fraud. In him we trust. Shout it, sing it. Oh, hail be of fraud. God bless be of fraud. We have emerged triumphant from all our faults. Through the crucible unscathed we passed victorious. Our trumpets pealing the glorious song. Play it, sing it. Oh, hail be of fraud. Oh, hail be of fraud. We shall always remember all that perished. In the struggle for our freedom, oh, hail our heroes. Our prayer shall be born both day and night. Save them always. Oh, hail be of fraud. Oh, hail be of fraud. Now our star shines everywhere. We pray humility. God guide and protect us all. Oh, hail your wisdom. Shielding us from glory unleashed by one and light and band. Be of fraud, be of fraud, shining forever.
We observe the minute silence to the following heroes of Biafra and the time starts now. We mourn our heroes past, we celebrate them. And our heroes living that are fighting on to see that Biafra is restored. We celebrate all of you who are also fighting to this day to see that the flag of Biafra flies above sea level. We shall continue until Biafra is fully liberated. You say, you say. Uh, welcome everyone to Canada B R G I E Town Hall Meeting. And many of you may be surprised, yesterday we were in fundraising, but we were not live. Yes, that is fundraising. And we weren't live. But today, this is a town hall meeting where the Biafran people have gathered in Canada to express their views and to tell the world the progress that they have made in making sure the international community knows about the Biafran independence. And without wasting much of our time, we salute the people of Canada for hosting the A P M and his entire cabinet and the entire Biafran people. With love in our hearts, we said to Canada people, we are happy to be here. And we hand over the mic to Canada so that they will present to us what they have prepared. There were our honorable rep of Canada and your integrity. Thank you, sir. Go back to your seat.
Oh, thank you so much, Ichee Aparawa, the Information Minister of Biafra Republic Government. I welcome you, thank you so much. Thank you so much for this. A time like this, you've been, you've been wonderful, so amazing. I welcome everyone. A P M, Honorable Oguchukun Kere, the mighty man of Velo. You're welcome. All the cabinet members, I welcome everyone of you. Both our brothers and sisters in homeland, I welcome you, the de facto government, I welcome every one of you. The brothers and sisters, Biafrans, everyone, please, I welcome you. Uh, today, we have come to do what we've been doing and this is the, is moving and shifting. Today is the time of Canada. Uh, the people that will anchor this program, I will mention their name and they will set the ball rolling. Wada Omo and Wada Yunis. You can set the ball rolling. Thank you so much.
Thank you, our honorable rep, Kasmia. Our protocols duly observed. I'll go straight to the next item on the agenda, which is opening prayer by Reverend Sister Ikem Horunaya. Please, you can spotlight Sister Maria.
Sister Maria, please unmute yourself so we can, uh, know where you are.
Okay, I have.
Okay, you need your camera on, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead, start your camera.
Okay. Nde weno, mune m. Na biana, so we start prayer. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen.
Uh.
Father, we thank you, we worship you, we give you glory. We thank you for a day like this. We thank you for bringing us together. Make it thank you, mune no mune. Ain ne kilegi na ja hage ma, na sigeke biakwa, biya noena ino gawa. Nihe ni ne wu ke ai ge mena mba si tako, oburu ke ge ni bu masi ne bi woge no. Go zoom muna in, nde ni ne nde ndua ya katasi wo rugi, wo dibogi, ma zo genkere. Na nde cabinet ya nini, na sige na, ki ne duha na ba hume, niho keha ne me, na agon ke wono wa kaino ni mea, ki chekwa ha ne duha popa ha na mba taha, beni ne na ha Jesus, amen. Ni siu muna in, ni ne nde ke no ni moa ya, ne chekwa ba ya na homeland, o ne wa ya. Nozo puri cha in, na sigeke ekwa ra hozo ku ra ra ya, ekwa na akambo to taha, ekwa na kiho ba na meko taha. Oburu godi no meha, niha ike na mara, keha geji gani wu ne, chekwa ku ba da in, na ha Jesus, amen. Biya noena ayin, ayin o wa nde na bambo, no ba da. Na cho uzo, na cho tanga ya akon, ka e geji we meka, wuru na ya la ro ne no la ya. Na ya in ne wu de, wono wa tigi na, ka na sige, bena adega ya ni ge, duru ku ya la ro no la ya, ba esapu ta na ha Jesus, amen. Ona aga ya ague la, o ne wa ya, mba si ni ne, ka ine ba kwa na apoki ke biya noena in. This moment, we know you have started the work and we know you are going to see it to the end. We ask all this, in Jesus' name we have prayed, amen.
You say.
In the name of the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
You say, say, thank you Reverend, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Reverend Sister. We'll go straight to the next item. We'll go straight to the next item, which is the welcome address by our honorable rep, Kasmia. A man of substance, a man who has held the Canada house in place. A man of truth. A man with great resilience. Please join me and welcome my honorable rep, Kasmia, to the floor. You're welcome.
Thank you, every one of you, I welcome you. Um, welcome address to our honorable acting Prime Minister, His Excellency Honorable Oguchukun Kere on his first official town hall meeting with Brigitte Canada Liaison delivered by Honorable Kasmia Opera. Brigitte Cabinet, Brigitte Canada Liaison representative. On behalf of the Biafra Republic Government in exile, Brigitte Canada Liaison, today being fifth of October twenty twenty-five. The distinguished worldwide Brigitte acting Prime Minister, A P M, His Excellency Honorable Oguchukun Kere. Extemed honorable members of the Brigitte Cabinet, the entourage of our honorable A P M, members of the press, international dignitaries and considerable observers, the dedicated comrades of the Brigitte Ca- Brigitte Canada Liaison, the indomitable and resilient Biafra Defence Force, B D F, brothers and sisters in the global Biafra dispora and the de facto government in homeland and all patrols committed to restoration of sovereign United States of Biafra. And there was na ibo beke, that is, the strength is in the people. It is our profound joy on yielding resilience and unbreakable spirit of Biafra determination that I, Honorable Kasmia Opera Brigitte Ca- Canada Liaison representative, stand before you today, being fifth of October twenty twenty-five at this historic Brigitte Ca- Canada Liaison Town Hall Meeting. On behalf of our formidable Brigitte Canada Li- uh, Canada community, a beacon of hope and action, we extend our warmest welcome to you, our esteemed worldwide Brigitte A P M, His Excellency Honorable Oguchukun Kere. Your presence here is not just an honor. It is a testament to the un- unbreakable chain linking our global struggle for Biafra independence. As a tireless advocate who has amplified our lobbyist, attorney's effort and rally and relics or U S lawmakers in Washington D C for recognition of our sovereign state Biafra, freedom from our, uh, for freedom of our, our Prime Minister Mazi Eppas Simon Njoku, who is unjustly and politically serving six years jail time in Finland. It is laughable. Where on earth do courts have six years jail time for terrorism? It is laughable. Indeed, it is laughable. A proof that our P M is innocent, a victim of transnational repression. In the same vein, you are unwavering activists seeking for the release of our Supreme Leader, Oneye Dumasenamdekanu, another victim of transnational repression, who was kidnapped by a Nigerian terrorist government from Kenya against international treaties and laws inspires us. We are grateful for your visit to Canada. A land that has become stronghold for Biafra activism, to share insights, strategize, fund and fortify our co- collective resolve against operations occupier forces in our homeland. Your Excellency, sir. Our own dear APM, we are wel- you are welcome to Canada, the country that told the world the incomparable truth that Nigerian government terrorism by victim by verdict of Canada Supreme Court. We gather here today basking in the effort of great result of your leadership a- achievements in Washington DC. Your vehemently opposition and you are pushed to block search of military war hairs to Nigerian terrorism government and your call for more sanctions on Nigeria terrorism states, you are as your testimonial on Biafra operation that was adopted and cited in the congressional website for all to see, even the doubting Thomas's. The convocation of 18th September 2025 Congressional Briefing and Hearing on Biafra in Washington DC thus taking Biafra independence to the global spotlight and the defense of our homeland. Today, we gather virtually standing on shoulders of our heroes past. Let's reflect on this great journey that has brought us this moment. The path of Biafra restoration has been fraught with prayer, not only from the external tyranny of the Nigerian terrorist states, but from internal tempests that tested our unity. Yet, like the resident palm tree that bent but never breaks in the storm, we have emerged stronger and unified and implenable all to the contextualize our resilience, for it is in our survival that our victory is assured. We have weathered two devastating tsunamis of in-house coup plotters in serious forces seeking to undermine our sacred mission from within. Even as we battled the oppressive occupier forces ravaging our homeland, the first tsunami struck between November and December 2024 during the triumphant Biafra Declaration of the Restoration of Independence Convention in Latifinland. This internal assault was launched by Ngozi Honabufulani Group, targeting our finance, our defense forces. This internal betrayal attempted to fracture our momentum following the historic self-refrainment and declaration that reaffirmed Biafra sovereignty in December 2nd, 2024. Latifinland. It was a dark hour. Our Prime Minister Simon Epa faced detention in Finland and plotters sought to exploit the curse, but Biafra's spirit prevailed. We reiterate our independence and adopt a transparent law, bylaws, and charter a designated ebube as our capital proving that no coup can extinguish the flame of self-determination. The second tsunami crashed upon us in June 2025 orchestrated by the CRC Chairman, Emma Madabo, Madab- Madabum led team, a a factional assault and aimed to dismantle our structures, our finance and defense forces, and sow discord. This internal strife accumulated in a pivotal event. The organic formation of the new Briget Canada Liaison. On July 2nd, 2025, we officially launched this this community rising from the ashes. Like the phoenix of Biafran lore, what began as a response to betrayal has worked stronger and ever transforming into a formidable backbone of loyalty, innovation, and unyielding commitment to our curse. We stand today not diminished, but elevated. A testament to the Hebrew proverb that says, "Oni ekwe, chi ekwe", which translates, if any person agrees, he's or her God. He equally agrees. Our Canada Liaison is now a model of resilience, drawing global Biafrans to borrow a cue and amplify our diplomatic voice on the world stage. In the face of these trials, we remember a timeless truth, which you made us to know and spoke to us often, quality, not quantity is what matters. Our movement is not defined by numbers alone, but by the fierce passion with which our members pursue Biafra freedom. It is the depth of our conviction, the fire in our heart, and the unwavering dedication to justice that sets us apart. This passion, internal quakes for sovereignty, has carried us through the tsunami and will prepare us to victory. Here, I highlight the pillars that have solidified our Briget Canada Liaison since its rebirth on July 2nd, 2025. These are the living proofs of our quality-driven echoes, showing how we bond, educate, amplify, sustain, and mobilize for Biafra. First, our weekly Friday meetings have become the unbreakable thread that bonds us together. Every Friday, rain or shine, across Canada cities from Toronto to Vancouver, we convene virtually to deliberate, to pray, and to strategize. These gatherings are more than discussions. They are sacred rituals that foster family-like unity.
Noe May, Wada Francis, Wada Juliana, Mazie Ambrose, Mazie Oke and Texmate. In their payment of liberation donations cannot be overstated. In our era of economic challenges, our Congress have demonstrated extraordinary discipline, contributing month by month to fund our diplomatic pushes, Lego bottles, defence forces and awareness campaigns. These donations is not merely financial, it is a pledge of faith, a tangible expression of our belief. In Biafra Dawn, your steadfastness ensures that we remain operational from lobbying in Washington DC USA to funding our liberation and supporting families affected by the occupiers' oppression. It is this quiet heroism that sustains our resolution. Finally, the volunteerism of some of us in listening in the lobbyist committee exemplifies our proactive spirit. Volunteers have selflessly dedicated time, talent and treasures to supporting our lobbyists and attorneys activities. Their service reminds us that the true freedom is won through action, not by aspirations. Your Excellency Sir, our own APM, Honorable Oguchukunkere. We welcome you to this town hall meeting. We invite your guidance on this front and beyond. Together, let us start and next to the next phase, intensifying lobbying for US and international recognitions, defending our homeland, countering the occupiers propaganda and preparing for the day when Biafra rises full sovereignty. To our members worldwide, all Biafrans, Omuchukokike, let us continue the funding of our liberation with passion, quality over quantity, unity over division. The tsunami have passed, the dawn of Biafra approaches and even as they face their lawsuit. Next thing, as I tell you and I echo the word of our APM, Biafra is here. Up BDF, up Biafra Republic Government in exile, up all Biafrans, Meguchukokike. Bless every one of us as we walk towards the restoration of United States of Biafra. Thank you and may our ancestors guide you and continue to guide you. From Honorable Kasmea, Brigitte, Canada, Lysin Earth Representative. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Honorable Kasmea. That was elaborate, you crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. God bless you sir, you are a perfectionist. Thank you very much, yeah, thank you fellow Biafrans. And like he said, it is about quality and not quantity. And in Canada, we have quality men and women who have stood strong despite all the tribulations. So the next on our list is breaking of Kohla Not, presentation and breaking of Kohla Not. And to do this is a man of honor. A lot of people may not know who this man is, but he's been dear from the onset with our leader Mazinambe Kano. And I met him during the time of the deformed DOS and he has everly stood strong, a noble man. Honorable Imma, please take the stage sir and do what you know how to do best.
That talk to a podcast, I'm fit to stop long.
My sister, thank you. Thank you. I greet everyone. Ekanem, Magnider. I put each of my Kohla Not. First of all, my greetings to our APM leader, Oguchukunkere. Ikukwama noya wa, Ni Bolant and the whole world. Also, my greetings go to the whole breed cabinet. You know, I cannot start mentioning the name of everyone now. But our people knows what you people are doing for us. Including Mestas. Sony Akwarawa. You're a great man in Biafra land. Our people remember you every day. When people in Canada hear. We also praying that very soon we will be celebrating this freedom. I will not take much of our time. First of all, I have the Kohla Not here.
Sorry sir, we cannot see the Kohla, can you present it? Let us see the Kohla.
This is the Kohla here. Yeah, this is the Kohla here. This is four Kohla Not.
Mazie, Mazie ma, are you using laptop or phone?
Ah, this is laptop.
There is something that is covering it.
Bend the, bend the camera small, down, no down.
No, go ahead, go, continue.
Continue bending.
Continue, continue.
Is it okay now?
Yeah, we can see it and then when you carry the Kohla Not in your hand, we will see, aha, alright.
Ah, this is the four Kohla Not. And this one, the only thing is that everyone knows that the Kohla Not doesn't hear English. The only English this Kohla Not hear is "na we, no be down". One for AK, one for you, one for Afo, one for Gwo. The four make this in Ni Bolant. Am I coming out?
Yes Mazie, but switch, switch to our language that our Kohla Not will understand, don't, don't use English, aha.
Okay, so, oja ade no. Nkembu. Baheke. Ayango. Ayuri and ayahfo. Ayan eno, engwe re na libo. So. Alama ga, ikuwe kwele. Noja. And edim. Hundred edema. We were toja. Ekwe nekwe, noja na. No baxinti tada. Nandi nini? Sina ama dianya fo Biafra. Otnine ebene nihaji. O nehaji, o nyaa obona sina. O ma dianya wef no anya wefu, maburu maka Biafra. They no baxinti tada. Na, ihe ni ne Biafra. Neme. Notchori editi anya nonjonya, ay na, no baxinti tada. Biafra ya biya, o ma dianya, o ma editi, ndo, fo Biafra. Nki boabo, Biafra bi kuku. Iku kwana ama noya. Ay na, ala Biafra. Siya bi ko. O nyandwa yu. Ne dwa yu zina, mbo, maji, oguchukunkere. Nande cabinet breed nini? Ko biya wroja, baho gi gendu buruburu. Na okwa makon, ufu nyani meha. Na hancha nini, ya den de, ba nyana la Biafra. Na okwa nimea neku, na gi bu chuku, uki kabiama. Chuku? Dubitara ni. Uwe warana, uwe gozi ayi, ndiro na bambo, siteniru, sitenara. No baxinti tada, ay na si, ki no ra yoko. Ki meka anya ha nini, bongwano. Ay na yoko wa gi bi tirofa. Si, gi bo nyekunyera, ngodi kungoke. Nande cabinet breed, meri, siha ware. Gi bo nyenyere ha angako, yi kunyaha meha yi diwe kuaka. Na gi bi Jehovah, chuku oki kabiama, gi ne dwa, no toto. Na ba, ne hiye, manokechi. Ebabo na hano. The whole breed cabinet, hancha nini, bidoni shiwe nodo. Na anya ndiro ama fo fu nyani meha. Ni gi bu ruhozo, yi gi bu ra yozo, we ra ya zo. Ni hiya yi ge ti dota, Biafra ama kuayi. Akwa yi nini, na gi bi Jehovah, gi bu chuku oki kabiama, giya akwarai yozo. Na ndiro anina na chua iniro, manazo, na hani ni, gi di tiha zere mehriya. Ah, Jesus Christ, you are.
Say.
He said, he said.
He say. Thank you to our own Mazie Emmanuel. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. And in our region, there is, the idea is that when one person walks apart, his footsteps can be easily packed. So in that light, I'm going to call on great Biafrans from Canada to support this Kohla. And I'm going to start with our Mazis, they are our leaders. And that's the culture. So I'm calling on my honorable rep, Mazie Kasmea, to set the ball rolling. Thank you.
Ah, omo Biafra kelemu nu.
Yeah.
Ndidi, komba Biafra kelemu nu.
Yeah.
Ndidi, no Biafra kelemu nu.
Yeah.
De Biafra be na Canada nini kelemu nu.
Nde wo.
Ah, tutu kwa de no kambide. Ya woga oje, edim, one hundred and fifty, edema ne ware oje, nde wo.
Eh eh eh, na kwa Biafra keba.
No, gora me, ye gu gora ne, gu bi kon.
Nde wo.
Aka mara maka kaiga koro, one night, Kasmea. Aka mara maka.
The only bishop I know, ano namolu gi, nde wo, mama.
Eh yo, eh yo.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Your presence, your presence, the presence of our ETAs.
Thank you.
Our next mother in the dance is Mazie Emmanuel O. Mazie Emmanuel O, can you please raise your hand? Mazie Emmanuel O. Mazie AO, you can get ready as well. Raise your hand. Mazie Emmanuel O, we are waiting. Okay, while we wait, if Mazie AO is around, you can come up. Okay, so I have Mazie Emmanuel O. He's supporting this Kohla with fifty dollars. Please let him. Nde wo, fifty edema for Mazie Emmanuel O. Nde wo sir. Thank you. Aka mara maka kaiga koro, Mazie Emmanuel O. Aka mara maka. Eh yo, nde wo sir. Okay, we have Mazie AO.
Moderators of the program, chere, chere, chere. If not, moderators go collect ticket now. Olopa, you did it.
I did, I did watch them oh.
Aha.
Oh my god, love.
It's like the moderator.
My phone is acting up, it look like the screen is frozen.
You can go out and come in again, so that we can refresh.
He doesn't even, he doesn't even agree to do it.
Bishop Comfort, you have co-host, you can start your camera, Bishop Comfort.
Darlo.
Oh my goodness, what kind of phone is this?
It's a laptop.
No, no, it's my phone, I mean the screen, it doesn't go east, it doesn't go west.
Oh yeah, you're using your phone, mobile?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, came very lovely, but what is this?
They go take a, take a aramadi, go take a aramadi. Well, I know what is happening, me I go collect ticket, gift ticket too. I dey hear those people speaking English.
Obulu ko, now, takesu wa re anya.
So.
Kasmea, they give no collect ticket too.
So, so, so let me.
Awando to go, awando to go la soro mo dollar. Eh, nyaa ha ticket na, gi diwa kala ba, I dey hear them.
So Olopa, Olopa, activate your red light so that when it's time to crash.
I love my wife's phone, I love my wife's phone. Bishop Comfort, I'm looking at you.
I have immunity today, I have immunity today.
Kasmea, I'm looking at you.
Kasmea, chere, 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 where are the moderators? Moderators, you need to awake the fire in the choir team because the choir team is like, some of them went into the other room. Aha, so when you want them.
Yes, yes, moderator, take it up, take it up, please.
They are still in the other room, so bring them out of the other room, please. Bring them out of the other room, please, so that
I really like it, how, how bad I feel, but if we go no land. Oh, best, best, oh, I have going.
You need to send your account number, you dey give us, I go allow make your voice dey come up, but no be your account number, you dey give us. Because we need a edema, but you're not giving us the account number. Please choir team, make una sit up because Canada needs to be on fire today, Canada needs to be on fire. And we appreciate everyone that have given us something from the beginning. Uh, Iche, Emma, thank you so much for that wonderful prayer on the Kohla Not. And we move back to the moderators, please let the fire continue to burn. And Olopa, activate your red light, activate your red light.
Yes, so I, I'm just being lenient now, but I go pick up, me I'm still on duty.
Moderators, over to you.
Alright, what are done more, go ahead. Okay, so we have Mazie AO, his hand is up.
Yeah, I've given them the mic. Mazie Ambrose, over to you.
Biafran de wo no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, edim, as me hadri wokonama, drenwa yama. Ya gazera ino, gazera ino, gazera ina for, gazera na for. Uh, edim, uh, one fifty na awoje, nde wo.
Wow.
Wow.
Ah, wow. Ah, nde wo, nde wo.
Unis, give us, give us a song.
Unis, give us a song for Mazie. Mazie AO ni dianima. Mazie AO ni dianima. Namada fu ikaya. Oh yo yo, nde wo, nde wo, nde wo. Thank you. Now, I'm going to call our Wanda's. Reverend Sister Maria. Raise your hand. Wanda Me tu Maribe, get ready.
Mister Maria, you have the mic, go ahead and meet yourself. And if you need your camera, you can turn on your camera.
Nde wo no menem.
Yeah.
Nde wo. Nde wo. Agazero nyuku gazero nyenta. Omo wa yana ha awoje, sa ana me we fifty edje, ware ne newnu, okose, yana, aki, yana angana kunota, nde wo. Nde wo, Reverend. Reverend Sister, ni me si fi ken, nde wo, ya gazero gi. Reverend Sister, ni dianima. Reverend Sister, ni marama. O nyechi me reze, namada fu ikoya. Oh yo, oh yo.
Thank you Reverend Sister, we appreciate. Thank you. Wanda Me tu Maribe. Raise your hand.
Anyone you call can just, nde wo, go ahead.
Um, ekelemo, oye, ukuno nyenta, no mena inini nde, biara no baxitaa, maka Canada town hall meeting. Um, ah, ay, ay wo na oje, wa, wa nyani so keno, awoje, so ay wo yamu. Yiji we wa kebe na wo moje, no afu funding ke no noje, ya la okwa ose. Ana me ji two hundred ed, Canada edema, ware na si uneme na o.
Wow. Ana kuwa ka ya.
Me, okay, me.
Ana kuwa ka ya.
Okay, ne, ne, baxitwa, ya baxitwa.
Canada, 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 Cana, Canada, Cana, Canada, Canada.
Ya gazie.
We need song for Wanda Me tu Maribe.
Wanda Maribe ni dianima. Ma yo ma Maribe ni marama. Namada fu ikoya, oh yo.
Eh yo, eh yo.
Eh, Canada down low, but try.
Oh, God bless you. So I'm going to call my own honorable, Unis. My fellow uncle, please support our Kohla.
It's that with me. Nde wo no.
Nde wo.
As me ya gazero nyuku, ya gazero nyenta. Ya gazere wo ke, ya gazere wa, ya gazero moaka. All Biafrans, ana make ke dunu, ana me ware angara. With the, eh, hundred edema, nde wo.
So darlo, darlo.
Agini.
We need song for you, for you.
Sing for me, who go sing for me?
Ana yunese dianima. Siwa wa ni dianima. O nyechi me reze, namada fu ikoya. Oh yo, oh yo.
Nde wo, Unis. So Wanda, Unis, you can take off from there.
Alright, alright, so let's go there. Um, we have, um, Wanda Obi. Is she in the house? Wanda Obi, come and take Kohla, ah, sorry, come and take a angara. Afufa, we have Afufa for our ladies. Wanda Obi, can you raise your hand, please?
You need to unmute, just unmute. Wada Obi, unmute yourself, okay, you're good to go.
Um, okay. Nde won, oh.
Yeah, well.
Bonjour, all of you, welcome to Canada.
Have a very nice year.
Very new, very new, very new. Very new. Very new, Canada, too.
We, we, very new. Eh, so, I had, I know, I saw, so, so, boy, eh.
We have to, eh, 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 we have two languages in Canada, so we have to greet you all. We are bilingual. Yes, nde won, um.
It's our police, it's our, oh.
Because they will come on all of you, we hear, eh, we see and watch everything, you, you know, ni, 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 me, I, eh, PM, we love you all, Apara, the media team, all of you, you guys are doing marvelously well, we thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm taking the Kola with fifty eh, gemma, oh, not, eh, not Kola, I'm taking the I'm, 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 with eh, and okay, okay, yes, with fifty eh, gemma, thank you.
Thank you, eh, yeah, gazier, eh, gee, Wada Obi.
Thank you.
Nde won.
Nde won.
Wada Obi, ni, diya ni ma. Wada Obi, ni, ma, ram, ma. Namada, puikaya, eh, eh, eh. Nde won. Yeah. I drink in mama.
Thank you.
And at this juncture, we want to invite our sister, OJ, ah, Wada OJ, named Pacific, eh, the lioness.
Where?
Wada OJ.
Yes, so.
Wada OJ, hurry up, before you get tickets or wrong package. Yes, so our police is very sharp.
Maybe OJ in another room. I put for the, I be go.
Well, you need to go, I want them, I want you.
I go for, see, they put for the, eh, eh.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, look, eh, better. Nah.
I'm not here, man.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, oh, nah, oh.
The longest time.
I'm out, the more, not one, the more.
Rappi, and, oh, oh, gee, why, I, why, I know. Be, okay, but. Be careful, there were. Good evening, man.
There were.
Ma, Ma Bishop, this way, they protect her like this.
Hey, Bishop, they protect you very well, well.
Bad boy, no, no, you can, because.
Yes, oh, they protect you very well.
Make, make she talk now, let us know that she's around.
Ah.
She has spoken, she has spoken.
You need to call another person.
Another person's here.
Okay, while, while we are waiting for Wada OJ, we call on Wada Francisca. Wada Francisca, one, your man, there were, come and take our first thing.
Yeah, yeah, there were, eh, Wanda Unis, as you're waiting for the person you called, you have one hand up, UK Lizen, you hand it up. Madame K. Oh my god, oh my god.
Ah, okay.
You're welcome, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Think I do official introduction, Madame K. Madame.
I don't know, I'm, oh, look, eh, so, eh, eh.
I'm blushing. All right. Yes, UK, UK has come to Canada, so I leave the mic.
Be a venue, madam, we make a difference, be a venue, Canada.
Now we get Canada, oh.
That's true.
Canada, now, a great child.
Should I go ahead?
Yes, baby.
I want to, before you come, I want to ask you a question, where is, eh, Furi?
Did you say Furi?
I think that, that's his name.
Reg has been there for the longest time.
Huh?
Reg has been here for a long time.
Hallelujah.
Reg, the fury is here.
Reg and Furi, you can go ahead.
Yeah, he's been here since we started.
Okay, I've not seen him.
Well.
So. Ma, Ma Nikki, go ahead.
All right, APM, welcome, yeah, no, APM. Okay, yeah, so this is Canada Day, and definitely we will come and rally our, our hands around Canada. Chukwueke, we thank you so much for today, and what you have brought for us, and we also send our greetings to all donors, and then you give all donors the zeal, the power to come up and then make their donations, okay? So I'll start my donation today with, um, I'll have to be doing in a, a, for now, so that it will reach our people. Exactly, if not, I have to make a pledge, but I don't want to make a pledge, so let me just donate in a J. Okay, so let me start with hundred and fifty, eh, J. Now, now, I'll put it up to with the CO, COA Lagos, thank you so much, so one fifty, Minister Betty. Yes. For me, for now, yeah.
Yeah, one hundred and fifty thousand, 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 hey.
Eh, 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 eh.
Okay. And now, what ever.
Why you, eh, eh, eh?
It's what I need, diya ni ma.
Oh, yo, oh, yo.
You can, you can, you can, you can, eh.
Eche, Eche, please, please call her that name again, so that she can donate again, please call her that name.
Oh, really?
Madame K.
I beg, I beg, I beg, my big, I beg, I beg, my big, I beg.
This last calling is to escort her back to UK.
Oh. No, no.
No, you know, eh, you know, eh, I call her before to, to welcome her to Canada, so now, I now call again to escort her.
I agree.
No, Mazie, so, no.
That was not the intention.
She wants to stay, she wants to stay. Well, you know, give, eh, go, pop, a, any again, and I back, eh, eh, eh.
Eh, she, she, she may come up again, eh, eh, just to escort her back to her seat, eh, but she may come up again.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, God bless you. Um, our sister, OJ, is taking, um, taking, um, I'm, with the sum of hundred, um, eh, gemma.
It's like her hands is up, oh.
Are you serious? Did you see her? I didn't.
My hand is up. Yeah, you should just, eh, now, give her.
Oh, I beg, help me unmute her, I beg, this, I'll, eh, if we see your, your voice, if we hear your voice, you know, you can see.
Her swagger.
Go ahead, Wada OJ.
Hey, woman, eh, eh. I'm sorry that I delayed, I came late, although I took permission. Good evening, brothers and sisters.
You're covered.
My elders, oh, mothers in the house, Monday, no, no. No, no, Monday, no, 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 they see.
Yes, so that's our warrior. Wanda Francisca. I beg, maybe not help me look to whether she there inside the house.
Please, anyone that hear is our name, just tap on the microphone to unmute. You can unmute without waiting to raise your hand. Just unmute and then when you speak, we will catch you.
Okay, why we are waiting? We call on our able, honorable. Who does the unimaginable? Wanda Omo, my co-uncle. Wanda Omo, can you please unmute and?
Thank you, thank you. Greetings, great behalf France. Greetings to our media team. Greetings to our able APM honorable Ogenkeere. Greetings to the entire cabinet. You're all welcome to Canada. And I'm going to support our cola with hundred Ajema.
Yes, sir. Wanda Omo, God bless you. And our mommy. Guys, you, you all need to know who this woman is. Our mother, Wanda Neka. She is the pillar of, the pillar of Biafra Laisin in Canada. She is a woman of valor. When you, when you hear about that woman of valor, she is. She is spotless, what I mean?
Transparency topless.
She has been there through thick, thick and thin. From the time of our leader Mazinambe Kanu. She's been with us when we were with the D O S. She used to be our treasurer. Yes, and she is still our treasurer till now. Can you imagine?
Accountability personified.
She went to Finland in twenty twenty-three and she was in Finland in twenty twenty-four. My goodness, can you give it up to her? Wanda Neka, a woman, and she's a grandmother. She is a grandmother and she is as strong as a lion. Thank you all for welcoming this our mother with an applause. Please welcome her with an applause.
Wanda Omo, you're welcome.
The wisdom. He had more than surprise. Okose to APM and the cabinets with the sum of fifty Ajema.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so we, uh, I don't know if Wanda Francisca is around. If she is not, we want to call on our Wanda, the beautiful lady. This woman, she's beautiful, as beautiful as the, as the moon and sun together. Wanda Onome, our Onome Biafra. Are you in the?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, wonderful woman.
Good afternoon, my wonderful family. Greetings to you all. My, uh, APM, um, Simon Ema, our, um, Prime Minister. Uh, not forget, uh, we ain't do in the cell. It got continued to take care of him with victorious at the end. Um, our information minister, you are doing a great job. God bless you. Our coordinator in, uh, Canada here is a wonderful man. And everyone in the house, Sister Yunis, Neka, everyone, we are all trying our best. May God bless our efforts. If you permit me, I'd like to sing a song, please. Hello?
Yes, carry on.
Okay. When they no way go go. I'm asking the house to rejoice with me because I have a family I belong to. I belong to Brigi, I belong to Biafra family, so I'm happy.
Yes.
So I'm asking the house to rejoice with me. I welcome us all to this great meeting, family meeting. Bless us all. So on this note, I'd like to support what's going on. My cola with a hundred Ajema. God bless you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so going, we are moving ahead, ahead. At this time, okay, if Sister Francisca, um, our Sister Francisca, um, sent a message across and she's taking, um, of course, with hundred Ajema.
Thank you.
Um, mommy, mommy, uh, mommy comfort, please. There was a song you sang earlier. Can you sing it for our sister?
Yes, what was it?
Is it?
Another one. Oh, just boy are today and I love it.
Me?
Oh, sister.
Oh, sister, sister. Okay, we have Sister Dorati. She, um, she called and said that she'll be, uh, running late. But meanwhile, that we should take one Nangara for her with a sum of fifty Ajema. Our Sister Dorati. Heyo, heyo, Canada, name is CPK.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so at this juncture, I want to hand over the mic to my co-uncle. Wanda Onome, uh, sorry, Wanda Omo. Please take it off from here.
And you have, you have some hands up, so try to.
Yeah, she, she's gonna do that.
Thank you. So now we are calling on all great behalf France to support our cola, to welcome APM to Canada. So the floor is open for our friends and well-wishers. So I see Texas B R O G I. You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, hello?
Yes.
There were everyone. Anyway, I want to thank everyone that is here. Uh, all Protocoles of Zav. Anyway, let me begin by thanking our leaders. Um, General Lojuku, uh, General Effiong, uh, even Wasrike, thanking for all the work that he did. Our great leader Mazinambe Kanu. Our PM Mazie Simon Ewa and our APM Mazogen Kere. Our information minister Mazia Bara. And there were, thank you all. Anyway, so the people of Canada, um, this is, uh, my name is Mese from the great state of Texas. We want to thank all of you. Some of you might not know the history of Canada, you know. So Canada, I'm in Texas, but I know some history about Canada, you know. So Canada was actually discovered by, uh, a Biafran, but some of you may not know. He was, um, a slave, you know, an American slave, a pilot. And when they wanted to discover what's, what are the north of, uh, United States of America, they said, well, you know, this guy took them, some Americans to the great state of, uh, to the great country of Canada. When he came up there, so he started dropping the airplane and they asked him, Mister Pilot, what are you doing? And he said, don't worry, Canada, you know? And he just kept dropping, like, Mister Pilot, where are you going? And he was like, don't worry, Canada. And eventually, he finally landed the plane. And the Uybo people that were there, they were like, wow, Canada. So that's what it is, you know? So that's how the name came about. But some of you might not know. So that's how Canada was discovered. It was a Biafran pilot from USA. So anyway, there won't.
Oh, no, they too much, too much.
Anyways, anyways, anyways. I'm here to, uh, the great state of Texas, want to, uh, support Canada today with, uh, two hundred Ajema. Yes.
Canada, Canada, Canada. No way. Thank you very much, sir. God bless you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We still have, uh, Wanda OJ.
Oh, no, Canada, no, Canada, Canada.
Wanda OJ, do you want to say something? Your hand is up.
Hello?
That might be, that might be the first one raised.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, because no, no, Omo Biafra, only when he, uh, my phone is somewhere in twilight zone. It doesn't allow me to do anything. I can't raise my hand. This is Brigi in New York.
Okay.
If I'm permitted, can I say something, please?
Sure. Yes.
There were no, Omo Biafra.
There were.
There were none.
Kasimé, Kasimé. Why are you not hiding your face today, Kasimé? No more Biafra, I can't remember no. Uh, ele pro manya be, isika difonu mama, lea nana, te bru Yunis. No, eh, be mama, you know there. So, and maybe twenty Ajema, seburo tu eh bem for our APM. Me, lekwa nyamhu, eh bemo azodema, me sebukarotu for. Eh gole, abutene Ajema, whatever it is, for our Minister of Information. They need to go home with one eh bemi each. They deserve it. Send the Canada, uno J C K. So yeah, bro, fifty Ajema, yes, I'm coming, give me one second. May worry, um, fifty Ajema from me to Canada. Then my sister Ethel, G fifty Ajema, send the Canada, G C K. So I may send the receipt, two fifty Ajema to Hashmere.
Wow. Prophet, yes, no, kajara kaja, why you kajara kaja? Prophet, I'm a Rama. Allah has me, oh, you then do your job well enough.
Yes, Allah, but is a tough lady. We love her.
Please maintain my immunity for today.
Oh, yeah.
When I, when I fix it, you need.
Wanda Noma.
Okay. Hello, everyone, am I coming out?
Yes.
Since I have lowered my hand, that's no problem. Yeah, they won't, they won't, everybody. Greetings, so, sorry, I can't on my video, please. I expect a greetings to my able PM, APM, honorable Ogenkere. Greetings, sir. God bless you. May God strengthen you in all your endeavors. Greetings to Sonah Parawa, able information minister, J C Kennam. Yeah, this is Noma from Italy. Yeah, I greet my brothers and sisters in Italian Laisane, his academic highness. They won't, no, no, I can't eat to give. The only educated man that can, uh, direct and darling, no, no, italo. I'm sorry for that, please. I'm just joking. Honorable Yunis, and they won't, oh, you people are trying, eh? You people are trying, yeah. Yeah, that, honorable Betty, I don't want to take your time because, um, before I go to the other room, uh, here, because I will be going to work by six o'clock, a few hours from now. So I want to support, uh, I, I am welcoming my APM to Canada, uh, with, uh, forty Ajema. Yeah, nah. And that's the welcome my able APM, His Excellency Ogenkere. Yeah, then, uh, with thirty Ajema, I never worry. Oh, no, sir, oh, no, sir, no, uh, Kedifana, yeah. Uh, granted, granted, with the hangar. And we're most of them, okay. Kamracha rofu, Wanda, uh, uh, Yunis, uh, take it on my behalf, eh, in a valley. So, yeah, 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 thirty Ajema, eh, yeah, yeah, forty, thirty. And then, eh, with every minister, Sena Bamba, you gotta go. Every Brigi member, Sena Bamba, headed by acting Prime Minister Ogenkere. Now, I don't can eat tuna. Another thirty Ajema, okay? Yeah, thank you all, thank you, forty, thirty and thirty. Yeah, calculate it. Thank you all, God bless you. So I'll be watching. And here, honorable Comfort, honorable Bishop Comfort, greetings from here. I can see him. And everyone, mapaha, here, please, eh? Love you all. Don't worry yourself. You see, I am here, but if I go to the other room, I have done what I have come to do. I'm also greeting my, you know, able sister, eh, Nenyah, Nenyah from Italy. Adawa, I can see you here, name, oh, you see, Ike, oh, I ain't a mirror, I ain't.
Thank you.
And you, wette, obodani, freedom for Bodani. And all the corunjo, eh, whoa, ma. She like, eh, chakwawa, Hamadike, Namdekalo, Hamadike. Chukwe, agahikwe, kihere Maggie, na honi nitara. She like, eh, chakwawa, our Prime Minister, His Excellency, uh, Simon Ewa. Ogapota, join the choir, I ain't a me. Let me not take much time. Love you all, love you all.
Love you too, love you too.
I'm sending the receipt to Sonak, my one motivation, yeah, on the link.
Hundred Ajema.
All right.
Hundred Ajema. All right, thank you, Wanda, um.
He calculated, I hope you calculated it well.
Forty, thirty and thirty, that's hundred.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Maybe, maybe Nioma is not, uh, aware that, uh, the website payment link is not working. So, um, we encourage everybody to make their payments to their admins and reps. Remit your payment to your admins and reps in your countries and they will remit to the government through the means that will be given to them. So don't hold your money or your donations down, waiting until the website is back now. Remit your payment to your reps and admin. They will record and keep every information and they will in turn remit to the government. Thank you so much, there will, let's continue.
Okay, okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Wanda OJ, your hand is up again.
Yes, I want to use this opportunity to take my mother. When you knew it was, introducing her, I never know she's a mother and grandma. I used to greet her like, good evening, my sister. I never wanted to give her my receipt. From today, I'm promoting her from my sister to my mother, my grandma. Starting from today with the sum of fifty Ajema. Canada, her brain is like computer with her.
Yes.
And if you gave her your payment, just forget about it. She will just analyze the stated that in a way, you don't need to ask question anymore. I was, I. But I know it's by the grace of God. She has been consistent in everything that we are doing. So I want to appreciate her today. Mommy, Adama, no more, my sister from me. Yeah, now, mother, my grandma. And again, yes, from Mama Neka, is Adama is her name too.
Okay.
From today. And again, I want to use another fifty Ajema to appreciate those that came to witness what is going on in Canada. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart. You guys are so lovely for leaving everything I didn't to come and stay with us to. Welcome in our APM, it's not an easy, but he will show us love. My people in space, God bless you all for honoring our invitation. Thank you.
Sister OJ, you are, you are a one in a million. For God's sake.
Thank you. We have our Wanda Oma, she wants to speak.
Sister OJ, my, uh, God bless you. Eh, you move, I wish I can go with hundred. When I say, she like.
It's like our mommy Neka was still saying something before we took it from her, what's happening.
Sorry.
Mommy.
A woman of few words.
She said, you well.
Okay, I don't think we have hands up anymore.
All right, more hands, come and take our cola, don't let us take this cola back, oh. We have, uh, uh, we have a sister. If you want, want a sister, we have a sister here. Uh huh, we have a, come and take, we have everything you can think of, okay? I'm gonna, all our spaces, we are waiting for you all, wonderful people.
Can I have the mic?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I just wanna use this opportunity to say thank you. Everyone. I think I'm with Ofu Maya. Maya Adini Rugi. Sister Yunis. Hello? Hello.
Oh, Maya, go ahead.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Mazi, Mazi, I be here, sir.
Um. I think I will Ofu Maya, there. With the twenty a gemma.
Eh, yeah. Nde wo, nde wo, sir. Agame buteregi ya. Nde wo, ya deregama.
Me will Ofu Kada. Kenya our APM. For twenty a gemma. Me will Ofu Maya there. Kenya my Honorable Rep. Honorable Casmia. Oh, when I men, Ndi ni nebele. Canada.
Hey, Canada.
Uh, yes, sir.
Canada. Eh, will Ofu.
Wow.
Maya Neba. Kenya our. Ebo Minister Betty. Um, well eh. Last week. Um, during. And eh, na X. Na space. Um, well eh, a kind of um, eh, here. Some of us, eh, my idea, he remembered for us. A widow sold her. Wanted to, he sold his ha- her house. And bring the money, that to Unyendu. To Unyendu. For this fire of liberation to be on. And Unyendu said. Where will you go and live when you sold it? It is something that encouraged a lot of us. We did not even know about that. But with that, I heard that eh, it takes me a while to think and remember. And eh, you know, Unyendu is not a greedy man. If it is a greedy man, he could have even gone since. Most of my friends in eh, Zoom that are working with the DSS. If they tell you, who doesn't, you that is here, who doesn't know Unyendu today? What is going on? Unyendu does not have watch. In that dear dungeon, but once is, once twice. Midnight. Three days he pray in a week there. It will, they say that nobody will be around there. It will be like, the whole world is inside that place. Is God that giving him? So, with this. She remembered for us. I said, let's think that eh. Precious wine that eh, you have here. Give to her. To always keep that fire and memory going. Hope you're keeping track of eh, my decision. Hello.
Yeah.
Okay, I hope I'm coming out.
Yes, sir, you not come more, come off of my sir.
Okay. And um. Eh, will Ofu Maya there. With the twenty a gemma. To our great Soni Akbarawa. He's a great man. Dead. Eh, will Ofu Maya there. With the twenty a gemma. Kenya our sister. Thank you.
Hmm, thank you.
The good in voice. Every day, I'm always on the listening on the space. I've never contributed one day. I'm always, once the space is open, once you look, you will see me.
Hmm.
Because of my, 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 the nature of my work.
Okay.
I have not been opportune one day, through this of my heart. So, I thank you all.
Thank you.
Um.
Nde wo.
Eh, will Ofu Maya there.
Wow.
Kenya our sister Tuto. Goji, na help.
Hmm.
Because eh, manah, this is eh, na kukwebi dogon. The school is open now. To keep her brain more sharper.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wow.
Kenya Olu.
Wow, nde wo, sir. Nde wo, hell, ana fukwa kaiya.
Finally.
Ah, wo be.
My sister. In the media, Oija.
Hmm.
I thank you all. Eh, will Ofu Maya there. Eh, add the body. Who will, na tiaka ni bu. Ni bumika, Kanada naga. Reshaga. Anna Nodia.
Yes, sir.
So. I will send. I will coordinate with my eh, my rep. And eh, others. So, all the Bridge Cabinet members, I thank you all. Keep on, fire going.
Thank you.
We are always under, we are letting, we are sharing every day, once the eh, the website is on. I communicate, I would yeah. We are trying all our best. I have never spoken one about eh, eh, God is doing. Finally, I will say, if there is that eh, 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 Anna. Girl. Kenya my brother Holland.
Hmm.
Hmm.
At the end of the every submission. How he is in his mind, he always ended with a cry. God have heard at our cry.
Yes, sir.
Man.
God, chukoke kabiama, and well, awa. And I, I may be, every day. So I thank you all. May chukoke kabiama continue to guide us, protect our great leaders. Eh, our APM. The active APM. Ikukuama noya. Um, we have ikukuama noya, um, we no, we have ikukuama noya, iheha me, with your butter. So far, ikukuana ha, ma noya.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, eh, ke na moni.
Thank you.
Nde wo, ayegede waghi.
Thank you.
You have done well.
Nde wo, sir.
My, my sister, Iggy the total. What is the total now?
Kenbako te.
Eh, bako.
Minister Betty.
Bako.
People, I didn't make record, the one, Keonye ne record. Ooh.
Okay.
Let me record, mama, this is.
On Yuni, you ne record, you ne record.
Let me call, don't worry, let me call.
Who is recording the money?
We have our Ebo Secretary here.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Hello, can I call it out?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the Ja Manja. I think you mentioned, they said that eh, twenty one, twenty for our APM. Twenty for our Canada rep. Twenty for Honorable Betty.
Mm hmm.
Twenty for Honorable Information Minister.
Mm hmm.
Twenty for UK NK, UK rep.
Yep.
Then eh, twenty for Tuto.
Mm hmm.
Hmm.
Then twenty for Mr. OJ Biafo.
Yes, sir.
Hmm.
That's eh. That's eh, eight of them, that's why eh, one.
Holland.
Oh, Holland. Holland.
We make it, we completed Holland with the two O O.
Oh, wow.
Wow. Dale. Wow.
Wow. Ana kukwaka here.
Ana kukwa.
I mean, it's a Holland.
Na.
Who God save. Akamarama kaigakuru. Akamarama kaigakuru. Akamarama kaigakuru, emakanakabanyo. That was.
Thank you. Mommy, mommy Betty, you chance me, you get one song, why be one sing for her? Oh, yeah, Yuni, go on. No, that's the song that I saw, Oji, eh, to our Prime Minister, I just came to my mind.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay, we have.
Three of.
Yeah. Wanda Nena ya. You cannot mute yourself.
Hmm. Nde wo no, only Canada, Canada, nde wo no.
Nde wo.
Nde wa, ma amna ha history of Canada. So. It's good. Um, from Italy here, I have a message from His Academic Highness. So. Osike we rofe bemumai. Were eh, were nee Mazi, our Ebo APM. Mazi Ogengkere. Were keno funukutaji bo ka- kaja ra kaja. Were nee Mazi Soni Akbarawa, the Ebo Information Minister. Then ke we rofo bo bo, angaraburibo, were nee wa adabete. Oh. Ya woro sixty a gemma. Si nekware forty a gemma, and ke mo wa no wendi kwe, we kwa do inha, and me no bossita. Hanile ware woro hundred a gemma. Nde wo no, you see.
Ah, nde wo, nde wo, wa nyama.
Nde wo. Nde wo.
Academic kindness, nde wo, sir. I chopari no lugu.
It seems to not academic kindness, none at the other room, so.
Eh, wait today, of Canada, of all day, academic kindness, you need to come and give us eh, your voice, eh? Please, nde wo no, chuku godzi no.
Nde wo. Akamarama kaigakuru, ma minenaya. Nde wo no, you see.
Mazi, okay?
Oh, yes. Good morning, Canada.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
They won't know, they won't know, Honoreables in the house. They wanna eh, good, eh, I don't know if it's a good morning or afternoon, eh, Canada. Eh, whichever one it is, eh, greeting, special greeting from my side. Yes.
Afternoon.
I think eh, eh, I think if I name eh. I don't, they here, they here, they wait, they wait, eh, to this last eh, event. Masi eh, ah, nde Canada, uno para ayoko, sipa eh, para li. Eh, I, you know, don't break cola, drink, present to na wine, one drink, I'm alone. Chop una cola alone.
No.
Abimekwe, abimekwe go. And eh.
You have to leave by a bathroom now, you know?
Eh, yes, like I'm a, for, I don't ask whether I'll up or no, or no, or no. Not if I name eh, all, all up or no leave.
One no bo.
All, all up or no leave.
One no bo.
Ah, no, yeah.
One no bo.
Nde wo.
I there on my post oh.
Eh, I don't see ah, my, don't see, eh, my, I know they go leave now, that is, he just eh, I forget.
I'm, I bet police no come cut, eh, don't you know, that's problem.
Nice eh. So, yes, Canada, eh, we appreciate your invitation today. That's why we also have to grace it. Yes, because eh, asina. Eba poroku. Onyena pohoku, biya kwa fu eh, mano. Iwojia. Mano, onyena na pohoku. Biya kwa fu ogu. Imana ma la ye pepe. So, as we come to Jolly with Canada, we must eat that cola, we must drink that wine, where you now present there. It's all for us. Nanya, ah, Bishop, nde wo.
Nde wo nam.
Nde wo, Emma, um, on behalf ofunde Aludo, because Aludo na Canada, but eh, ah, but eh. Ah, but ago. Had the number where were. So on behalf of Aludo, I nee G fifty a gemma, nee we roje.
It's so.
Dale, oh, dale.
Nde wo no, thank you.
Daurina. Eh, yo, nde wo, nde wo, nde wo.
I, I come one ya, we there, Maya ha, agapo ya po.
No, no, yeah.
Eh, eh. May, maya ha, Adara, Adara, Wada, Yuni say lo, na aga ngomaya ha no.
I'm, I'm happy your network did not cut oh, while you are.
No, I, that's why I changed the room, I changed the other room. I don't. I eh, I'm Matalabe de here, sir, I'm the kind of eh, gadget one, I can ah, go. Um, a good land eh, um, supporter, eh, in eh, in a way to eh, in everything humanitarian spirit. So each time, I'm not that early, instead of eh, boosting the eh, the network, on eh, we eh, so now. I don't realize it, I have to leave, go enter the other room. I wonder my, so, it's strong today, yes.
Oh, my God.
Nde wo, sir.
Nde wo.
Nde wo, no, nde wo, we there, we there.
Thank you.
Mazi oke, oboto akidiyo. Adio ye ni kagi. Ieja.
Okay, na tota ma. Eh, Yuni, that's long.
I don't come on kadamo, be cool, before I na, na, asina.
Okay.
Okay. I've got them country, I wait a god, eh, see, eh, eh, care what eh, 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 is eh, I'll cook on pot eh, eh, where put you eh, we eh, eh.
Eh.
Do ya, do ya, I call, I do ya, see kebe no.
Eh, eh, I will kebe no. Yeah. Eh, manah, I go katala Bible, ah, na, I go yes, Confucian eh, this.
One no bo. Um, we are la ma, eh, eh, to a God's Allah Church.
Bishop, no, for here.
I don't want my church to talk, I call my church to talk.
La, go na the Bible.
I trust you.
Eh, eh, la, do ya, police, eh, 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 la, la, la.
Church eh, grata, no no, far book, I'm not eh. Eh, ga ni ru bundu eh la, cha zubangu, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Please, you, you went with your head.
Doctor Comfort, you can take the floor.
Thank you so much. Appreciate Canada from where you are coming from. Want all of you to know that I appreciate the unity in Canada. And Hon Casme, I just put my cap off for you because you've done very well. Eunice, I've been following you, my God is strengthening you, fearless woman. Appreciate our A P M, the man of the day. The first man to. The man for I Ghana, Washington. Uh today, um for the presence of our um A P M, because he goes from one place to another, one place to another. I just donate um um thirty a gemma for him. For Barawa, Barawa, I appreciate you so much more than I can express tonight. Appreciate you twenty um dollar. And for Canada, appreciate all of you as well with another twenty um a gemma.
Thank you.
God bless all of you.
Now, Comfort, the hallo hinne, thank you.
And for for that song, I put another twenty for all of you.
Yeah, thank you, mom. Um sorry. What what does what does this song to please? Thank you.
Sixty plus thirty, ninety.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate. God bless you.
Thank you. Next, we have our honorable Mazie Emelike.
That promise my red.
Yes, so he deserves to be welcomed with seven bozas.
This is Bia France. This is, this is wonderful. This is wonderful. Nde won de Canada. Guys have done, done beautifully, beautifully done.
Done very well.
And uh this, I'm a see this opportunity to to say uh hello to my uh A P M His Excellency, uh Honorable Ogeng Kere. I added, I threw a salute to. You know, we have to remember our men. Our men who are spending their time in the bush. Well, the bush is an understatement. They are really spending their time with the wild, wild. You know bushes and wild uh animals. So uh I greet them, I salute them too. You know, because they're doing a wonderful job. And of course, I all the honoreables and the ministers in the house, I have to also give you your own salute, you know. And uh uh we we cannot go, I can't go in further without remembering at least uh uh the the men who who saw this long time ago.
Yeah.
And they tried to, they tried to tell the world what was going on, but the world didn't listen. And we're talking about uh General F Young and uh and General Ju. Uh and we've, we are thankful for the, for the sacrifices they made. Because without them, I don't think we would have been uh, we would have been here today. Uh we would have been uh already uh, you know, singing by Bi Allah, you know. But I thank, I thank them so much. And uh also, I thank our our Oyendu uh and our Prime Minister Mazze Saman Eba. These two men that who have sacrificed everything, everything, everything. And uh and as, you know, they, I can't say enough about these two men. Uh because, you know, what they've done is just miraculous. Uh i- it's not, the the ebos are not known to be that way. That is not the image. At least, that's not the image Nigeria portrays us, you know, out to the outside world. So they have done exceptionally well. And we pray that one of these days, they will be out with us. And they will give, they will get their befitting honor, you know. So I, I, I I am very grateful that we are still following their path, you know. And to all Bia France who have come out to grace this occasion. You know, you, 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 I mean, you are just incredible. The journey is tough, but you know, but you're hanging on tougher, you know. Uh you, you refuse to, 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 to back down. You refuse to move, I mean to, to just, I mean, to, to give up. Especially our media, our media has been very incredible. I mean, i- it's, it's, it's like they do not know what it means to relent. No, it's not in their dictionary. So I thank all everyone that's in participating. Because uh we deserve to have our own country.
Yes.
And and Chukwokikabiamma knows that. So on behalf, on behalf of Brigi USA, North and South, uh we, we're gonna be picking the kola not with a hundred a gemma. And uh and uh also, uh we're gonna be tossing in another hundred a gemma uh to support our A P M. That will be two hundred a gemma. And uh and I say everyone, even those sitting on the fence. Hey, the door is about to close. The door is about to close. Come on down, come on down because uh it's, it's not gonna be long. It's not gonna be long. Come and join us so that we can all rejoice together.
Thank you.
Thank you. We love you.
Nde, nde won.
Thank you. Keep it coming for the kola. Unless it's Mazie Mac, you can take the floor.
They will know my wonderful people. They will, but they know people would. I just came back so exhausted. Just woke up now with a start that are supposed to be on the meeting. I came in earlier than before, but because of the the activities of the day. I, I don't have much to say. Uh Canada is my second home because of my sister. Who have been every anytime we are around, she's, she's there with us. So when I consulted my, I said this evening, I told her, you are aware that Canada is on the stage. She said, yes, it's aware. So I just call me on behalf of Aludo State. Ludo is giving ten thousand AJ. Why I, on behalf of myself and my county, giving forty thousand AJ to round it up fifty thousand AJ for Canada. There you get the receipt, the receipt will be given to our Information Minister. Given to us. We appreciate you all. Keep on doing the good work that you have been doing.
Thank you.
Somebody, somebody is making announcement too.
Is that Sister Maria?
God bless you.
God bless you, sir. Nde, what, sir. We appreciate, sir.
I'm gonna have special song.
Wow, we agree. We appreciate you people. God bless you all.
That was wonderful. Reverend Sister, God bless you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, domo?
Okay, I don't see any other hand up, but window is still open for people to come and support our kola.
Um I think I just Chuku is up.
Okay. Mazie Ayosuku as, ashebu.
From here, great Bia France. I put on my video too. I'm at home today. Today is a great day. Today is a great day.
Yes, sir.
During the, the program, I've been, I've been watching since, yeah. Okay, I thank everyone.
Nde won.
Uh you can, how does he say? Okay, yeah. I want to appreciate everyone. Again, Manika.
Yes, sir.
I want to appreciate everyone. Sister Eunice, the lioness. You know, I've been watching. I've been in this program since it started. I'm so happy. I'm so excited what is happening. A P M, Tutoma from my side. Yeah, you know, sometime it beat my imagination. Like we are doing town hall meeting, some people are, are, are some places telling Bia Frabili, Bia Frash should come together, Bia Frash should do this, what is coming is that. Whereas there is existing platform, you people decided to run away from it, decided to create. And you are there now, doing program whereas what Bili is happening somewhere. Come on. I even saw some people saying that the people following Ogeng Kere. Uh they, they, and the family fair, nothing where I come which they are down. Then to ask myself, how? On, upon all these people here, I seen a family. You know, I've got in a family if you hang when you spirit.
They are the children of perdition. Sorry, they are the children of perdition.
Because one thing I noticed they fail to understand is that they don't know that among all of us. A P M Ogeng Kere, every day he's on his heavy heart praying for P M to come out. Thing he left, the thing he left on his neck. People, they, they can see this and they're just there making noise, calling Ogeng Kere, Sabo Ogeng Kere change this, Ogeng Kere change that. What did Ogeng Kere, P M never one day come out and tell us this person is a secretary of uh of a Bia Frash. This person is director. No, if you have a discerning mind, you will understand. All those name only appeared there because it was application to fill up. It's not that it was a position. And uh and their name have to be removed because of the problem that they brought in. So there's nothing wrong in what Ogeng Kere did. Anybody will do that. But now people choose to use it just to castigate an innocent man.
Yeah.
It beat my imagination. Anyway, that's not what I'm here for. I just, I just saw, I just, I just wanna use it to remind our people how gullible some people can be. I want to appreciate our sister Eunice because uh sister Eunice is like a, a child born out of necessity. Because when uh, when Ngozi Arabezee brought her, her rubbish, that is when sister Eunice came out. And since then, she's been consistent. She's been there, both in Twitter. Every time she's there trying to educate Bia Frash, trying to. She's a lioness. She's fighting like a, like a lion. I appreciate you, Sister Eunice. Thank you very much for the work we have been doing for Bia Frash. Without wasting time, um on behalf of Australia and the, and the Odemegu State, my dear state, Odemegu State. Um I'm gonna use a fifty thousand AJ to collect the kola. Um I, and also, I wish, I pray, one day Australia, we, we invite our A P M too. We need to do that before.
Yes, sir.
The problem we are having here is most of our people have gone on defense. But nevertheless, we see how we do it. I appreciate everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Bia France.
Thank you.
You are, you are a soldier, nde won.
Mazie Ayole, keep up the good work.
You too, sister. Keep it up. Thank you.
We, next one is Wanda Anurika.
Hang later, yeah. Hang later, go ahead.
Good evening all. Good evening, Canada. Canada is my second home. I have a lot of family there.
Thank you.
Well, for what we are doing, we must give Chukwokikabiamma thanks because the zoo Nigeria now is talk of the town. All social media, they are saying about uh Nigeria. So the work of our A P M is indeed at work. Everybody now is talking about Nigeria, the Boko Haram, the terrorists and so on, the killing of Christians. So God is seeing us through. And I believe within a short time, our freedom will ring bell. I greet our A P M, I greet our honorable Oyendu. Mazze Nangekanu, I greet our honorable A P M, Saman Eba. So I greet all the honoreables in the house. I'm supporting today's fundraising with five thousand AJ. And hopefully, coming Sunday, which is twelve, Odemegu States will be on stage for town hall meeting. So I invite you all to our great states, Odemegu states.
Bless you, ma'am.
Alright, thank you, there.
Okay, still on the kola, we have Wanda Obi.
Nde wonu again. Anyway, I won't take long. I just want to say thank you to the personnel at the X. I'm a listener. I have graduated for being a listener. I have, I have my reason for that. So I'm just saying thank you. You guys are doing marvelously well and good. You know, Toto, Madame Kiss. So everybody, every one of you, I can name names. I just enjoy all of you and you guys are doing my job. So I'm taking fifty a gemma to say thank you, all of you.
Wow.
Messy, thank you very much.
Wanda Mary, you cannot mute.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, Sister Ankiruka. Good evening, Sister Eunice. Oh my God, good evening, Canada. So, you take at me. Check my family. Sister Eunice. I'm so happy, oh, believe me, we Nedland, we want to pick, we want to pick courage from Canada. Because I'm so proud of you guys. And I hope the rest people, the rest country, the rest in Europe or in America, they will pick courage from you guys. What happened, you know? I'm so happy to be among you guys this evening. Our A P M, good evening, good evening, sir. Good evening. You're welcome to Canada. Believe me, I want to talk a little bit about uh in Nedland. Nedland, please, Bia France, all of us, we can see what is going on. Wherever you are, please pick courage from Canada. Come out. Because this thing, what we are doing is not just for where we are now, it's not for Nedland. We are fighting for your own land, where you come from.
Yes, sir.
So if any mistake was happening for the wrong people, and you don't need to continue to pick the courage of the wrong side. You have to come out because you already know that this is what you are. You will not be because of one person. You backslice yourself, Nedland, please. Wherever you are, pick up courage today. As our sister doing it, you know. Where one or two people are gather, that is the president of God is there. So Nedland, I beg, I beg of you guys, listen, our A P M. There is no difference between what our P M was doing, even our leader, what is there passing through. If you're really freedom fighter in Nedland, if you're really, you're fighting for your land. If you're really, you love the people.
How they busy here, just quick, quick, just very quick.
Thank you, sir. So Nedland, please, I beg of you guys. Try, 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 try to be what uh uh Canada is doing now. We will be so appreciated. Thank you very, very much. And I want to welcome our A P M and support our Eunice with thirty a gemma. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Sister Mary. We love you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
God bless you. Keep up your good work.
Eunice, we need song first, Cameri. Okay, we have Wanda Nelly. I'll mute yourself, Wanda Nelly.
Nde wonu, nde wonu, our protocols we observe. Hello. Nde wonu Eunice, eh can you bangge? Um not to fugoge. Uh a gemma, ten dollars. Sorry, ten a gemma.
Hey, is this our Nelly's media, Nelly's TV?
Yeah.
I, I, I heard the voice and I was like. What you want, Nde wo? I, I, I heard your voice and I was like, this is your voice, I miss to hear it.
Oh, I go, I see, can you pay, we're maraputu, so, nde wo no. Uh.
Akama. Nde wo. She still saying something, no?
Eh?
She, I beg, wait, she, Sister Nelly is still saying something, I beg, no better.
I see, she make a barani, Mazinamdekanu me.
Okay.
Chewe yanyaya who is seek, gobate, let him get quick recovery. And the shame will be for the zoo. Nekene wama, Mazie, ye em, and Mazogainkere, who is handling the mantle, may God sustain him and every genuine Beaufra, we will get to the promised land. He say.
He said.
He said.
Nde wo, nde wo. Akamarama Kai Gakuru, Wanda Nelly. Nde wo.
Thank you, sorry. Um, Mazie okay, I will give you the, I think he's still there.
Yes, I, I see there, I see there. Why that way?
I was sent a message to you because the other ten, uh, that day Mary donation, Mary voting, you know, I made ten dollars, so since then, payment has been a problem, so after you give me how to remit it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, please, Beaufrains, I also want to remind us, Wanda Nelly is another bum, uh, soldier in the media. Please, let's try and, um, uh, subscribe to her channel. In fact, if you, if you, uh, listen to her, it's like, uh, one army squad. So please, uh, Wanda, please, make your, this your channel now, post it, send it to Wanda Unis, so that she will pass it across to Beaufrains to follow.
She knows it, oh, she was spe- uh, pronouncing, even spelling it one day in the house, so. Nellis, she, she.
Yeah, maybe I will type it here, Nellis, N E L L I Z, yeah, right?
Yeah.
Oh, you can still type it on the comment section, ma, so that everyone.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, I will do that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mazie okay, nde wo no, adavete, kene monya wana, all the media, nde wo no. Nde wo. Amaranima.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. So we're moving forward. Also, our kids are not left out. They have to welcome our APM and his entourage to Canada. So we will be calling on Ms. Johanna for her presentation.
Ah, young Shagro.
Yes. Honorable Ken, nde wo.
Ah, I haven't, nde wo, I just, I just saw you now.
We just saw the.
Okay, nde wo, nde wo, nde wo.
Nde wo. That's it.
You don't want to show your face? Why? You can show, you showed your face last year. No? Okay, I know me to turn off the camera. Okay.
Ma.
Let, let her take your seat, let her take your seat, so that you fit comfortable.
Yeah. Uh huh, there we go.
So yes, you do. When I told that, I'm sorry, when I told that, that she has to, uh, read a poem like she did last year, she was like, oh, but last year you told me that, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna read next year because you said Beaufra is coming, I said, yes, Beaufra is coming. So, so what happened, I said, um, it will come next year, you will not read next year, she said, you promise, I said, yes, I promise.
It will come, Johanna.
Beaufra is coming, okay?
Okay, Johanna, Johanna, listen to me, we are in post-declaration of Beaufra, so it's a process.
Yeah.
It's a process. So after now, we get to the next stage and we get to the next stage. So take your beautiful seat and read your poem.
Yeah.
I'll share you in, okay?
You're bold. You're brave. You're strong.
Uh huh.
You do it.
Yeah, yeah. Come meet Beaufrains, come meet other Beaufrains, we love her.
Johanna, come. I will get you some chocolate, come.
We love her, we love her.
You. I'm gonna give you chocolate, come.
Okay.
Okay?
There's a gift. There be a gift.
Yeah, we, we love her. We want to, we, we want to hear from, uh, from Johanna, when she want to bless us. In fact, this for ten minutes, she should tell us now.
Okay, alright.
You, you know one thing, one thing is that this children can disappoint in good time.
Okay, she's, she's turning off the camera, please, excuse me.
No, she say wait, let her decide.
The children can disappoint in good time.
That's your boy.
You're brave, alright. Go ahead.
Is there one? My.
You're loud.
Nde wo no, my name is.
Nde wo.
Nde wo.
Nde wo, Johanna.
Nde wo.
My name is.
Wanda Unis, so, I can see you, bo.
My Supreme Leader.
Okay, oh, she has started, okay. Um, start again, okay, someone interrupted. Okay, she's starting again.
Nde wo no, my name is Johanna. I want to start by acknowledging my Supreme Leader, Mazinamdekanu, and my Prime Minister, Mazie Simonepa. Great men who have sacrificed everything so that we might be free. We love you. My Beaufra, our Beaufra, a land of beauty we long for you, oh, land of our ancestors. We're hearts united, we strive for freedom's call, our spirit unbroken, trials and all. We will stand as one, do, do joy and strife for Beaufra's future, we will fight for life. Our land, our people, our pride and might, we will never surrender, day or night. We will rise above the chains of pain and Beaufra's glory will forever remain. To descend, Mazie Ogekele, I want to salute you for your courage. Keep up the good work and may God crown all your efforts with success.
He say.
He say.
He say.
He say.
He say.
He say.
He say. Okay, beautiful.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Johanna. We love you. Thank you, we love you, Johanna.
Love you.
I, I'm owing you chocolate, I will still give it to you, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you hear what she read?
Yes.
Yes, we did. We did, she did it wonderful.
Yes.
She did it wonderful. We know you could do it, we, we knew you could do it.
You.
Hannah, can we just see your face, at least have it.
Thank you. See your pretty face, come on, come on, come on.
See your beautiful face.
Yes.
Beautiful.
With a wave. We are all waving.
So beautiful.
We love you.
We love you, yeah.
Thank you, Johanna, thank you. Thank you, this is, thank you.
She said, we will rise above the chains and pains and forever. Beaufra's glory will forever remain.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Honorable Unis, you can pick it up from there.
Do, doana idangima. Mbo. Doana idangima. Mbo. Onye chi meri. Namana. Oyeyo. Oyo. Yo.
Yes, so.
I think she did not, she did not know that we sang for her. I think Mama should bring her back to know, to know that.
She's, she's here.
Okay, she's here, okay, okay.
Yes, thank you, everyone, hello. Um, thank you, everyone, um. This, um, moving ahead, we want to, uh, call on our
Hold on, hold on, hold on, there are people that want to appreciate Johanna's, uh, rendition. Yeah. We have, um, um, Beargia in New York, our local in charge, over to you.
Nde wo, none de Beaufra.
Nde wo.
Nde wo.
You know, being Adha Beaufra and now being the official police, I want to appreciate my fellow Adha Beaufra with twenty AJ ma.
Yee. Dalo.
So Kashmir, you'll be getting the receipts.
Dalo.
Nde wo no.
You.
Nde wo.
Akamarama Kai Gakuru, Beargia, New York.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nona's hand has been up, oh.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, you have, you have many hands.
Thank you, ma.
We turn us, we turn us over to you.
Oh, ne ne. Ie na. Ie. Oh. 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 Oh, ne ne. Ie na. Ie. Oh. Oh. Oh, ne ne. Ie na. Ie. Oh. Oh. Ie na. Ie. Oh. Ie na. Ie. Oh. Oh.
Yes, sir.
Emma, Emma, sometimes it's like this. Uh, Iga neke lechineke, no matter any situation, because Chukokika Biama is doing his will and Uche Chukune, eh, me, I wa bu ma the way here, I wa ke, eh, me, to stop it. So that is what we are experiencing today. The will of God will continue to be done. So I just want to appreciate our, our lovely sister, our daughter. We really appreciate you. Also, at the same time, our acting Prime Minister, our Information Minister, and each and every one of you that has been here today, those of you that have, you know, put in your contribution, your time and everything. I'm going to, um, drop the mic here, you know, and then make my little contribution with the sum of fifty AJ ma. Thank you very much. God bless you all.
Thank you, Nona.
Thank you.
Oh, one million, God bless you, welcome ma. We appreciate that.
Akamarama Kai Gakuru, Victor Nanso. Ah.
Dalo, dalo, Nene.
Thank you so much. Um, Honorable, uh, Unis, please, later you forward us, um, the YouTube channel of, um, is it Nelly?
Nelly, yes.
Uh huh, so that we push it out for every Beaufran to follow us, one of our media teams. And we use this opportunity to encourage every other person that can speak in the media, in YouTube or Facebook or do anything, any platform, please, reach out. As soon as you put your media handle out there, bam. Reach out to us, push the channel to us, so that we make it to go viral. We need more people to be speaking on, uh, YouTube. Most especially when you are speaking, try to also use our botanical language. So that those that are thinking that they can use our language to destroy the minds of people, you can also change the narrative for them. Thank you so much. Uh, Honorable Emileke, Honorable Web, Honorable Web.
Yes, sir, I, I just want to honor, I just want to honor Izayata Johanna. Uh, I mean, she is courageous, you know, and I encourage, uh, I encourage her to continue to try, you know, to, to be courageous. And all our mothers to encourage their children to come forth and then join, you know, join us in what, what we are doing. Because this, everything we're doing here is for them. And I would, I will support there with fifty AJ ma. And I tag on, tag that on to the two, two hundred and that'll be two fifty. Nde wo no.
Wow. Wow, nde wo, sir. God bless you, sir.
Nde wo, Honorable Emileke.
Akamarama Kai Gakuru. One night, okay. Ah.
Agazi.
Abarawa.
Yes.
I think my rep, um, said he was disconnected, if you can, uh.
I've, I've grossed him again, he just came in again now. So.
Thank you so much.
Nde wo ma.
Oh, we, we have a donation from our sister, Sister Nonyen from Maryland. Fifty AJ ma, she's supporting. And she's welcoming our APM, thank you, Sister Nonyen.
Thank you, thank you.
Akamarama Kai Gakuru, Sister Nonye Abanyo. Ah. Akamarama.
Our deputy rep, Honorable Chini, over to you.
Okay. Nde wo no, greetings to my people, my people.
Nde wo.
Nde wo.
You all, I greet you all.
Nde wo ma.
Oh my goodness, I know I'm very late and apologize, it's just been, you know, family engagements and stuffs like that, you know? So I just said, uh, today is not gonna pass me by without, you know, popping in to say hello to my brethren from Canada and to thank them for this wonderful event, you know, for hosting us today and hosting our APM His Excellency, Honorable Oye Chukunkere. So I also want to thank every honorable in the house. My greetings, my love to you all. Um, greetings to our leaders, starting from General Odjuku, um, General Philip Fefiong, all the way down to this day. Our, our, um, was, our Supreme Leader, Mazinamdekanu, our Prime Minister, Mazie Simonepa, and our APM, our BDF, our brethren, our veterans, our mommies and daddies, uncles and aunties, our children, our youths. Oh my goodness, so greetings to all genuine Beaufrains. Me Chukokika Biama answer all our prayers. Um, let me just, you know, divert a bit. Um, last week, uh, one of my babies, you know, she celebrated her thirteenth year birthday, right? Then she was asked what her birthday wishes were and she said, number one, she prayed to Chukokika Biama to release our leaders and grant us Beaufra.
He said.
Now, this is a big, this is a big prayer and a, a big prayer request to Chukokika Biama and to the gods of our ancestors and our ancestors and to our fallen heroes. And I pray that as my baby, you know, requested for this, may it come to pass in our lifetime in the name of Chukokika Biama.
He said.
Yamara yima, Yamara umuna yima. Yamara our fallen heroes, even our BDF, our Biafra, um, BDF, right? So it is well with them all. And when they cook for talk, who know that deliver via any money, Kori. How fun, how fun. And no we don't come against us, shall prosper. Every evil attempt of the Sabo to us, against our freedom, against our website, against everything that concerns our liberation. May they continue to fall into the bottomless pit and never come out in Jesus' name. Eh, chelekwe monyu ku kelo nyenta, kelle our beloved mothers, ndine mama. Unanano koko, no munde ne.
Dalo, dalo.
Chukubikani.
Yes.
Is so quiet, oh, is so quiet, Chini. Eh, eh, no, eh, no, my, it's not sleeping, oh. Is so quiet, not to hear from that.
Imanawa, enyendeba, eyota go. Enyendeba, enyendeba.
It's so quiet, oh.
And it's, uh.
Enyendeba, enyendeba.
That is, uh.
Enyendeba, enyendeba.
Miss Bapimo.
It's Winkie, Winkie's song, go.
Yes. Our Biafra songs, we can't, I mean, we have, Biafra songs.
They have to call here.
They were.
Yeah, but the Biafra, it's our song, you know?
It's our song, oh, no, no, has been singing as long as thirty years ago.
Yeah, we're good, unless we, you know, unless US will help us and, and.
When my mother and daughter, I, I grew up, more than forty years ago.
Oh, if we gonna.
I had my mother, I grew up, my, I got, I, I, I could there. You got to go, I just, I could, I could, then, ah, ah, eh, nah, eh, eh, nah. So, I just got here.
Oh, no, because she was, ah, Winkie did the corruption, we go, ah, oh, yeah, I mean it. Winkie, what's the corruption, my, yeah, I'm, 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 where they going, ah?
Canadian rep, a greeting, please, uh, because of time, and you know, we have, uh,
Time, time, time.
Family in Europe as well, this is, uh, their midnight, uh, almost. Uh, I think we're on the program, we still have other items, so let's move on. They win.
They won't know. So our rep, please, bring in our able APM. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Can I make my donations? Okay, um, real quick, right?
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I already donated on that Texas, but in addition, you know, for coming in late, I'm giving additional twenty a gemma to, you know, pick up my own, um, Akilu and to greet, to greet all my comrades, who does the runo.
They were.
Dalo. Dalo. One that she need, need, ya ni ma, umbo. One that she, ya neke megi, umbo. One ye chi me refe, namada.
I don't know, eh, eh, that you need. Tasme, I can never, oh?
They were one day, they were.
Over to you, our honorable rep.
Okay. My APM, Ekelengin, they were the mighty man of Velo. Uh, please permit me, uh, I would want to show you something. Um, ichi abarawa, Biko, can you bring that to bear? Please.
I know that you disappoint, though.
Hehehe.
I trust you. Just relax and listen to this.
Biafras, Biafras. Are we ready? Woo!
Yeah.
Ogechi, ogechi, kama. Ogechi, ogechi, kama.
Hey, hey, hey!
Ogechi, kama. Ogechi, ogechi, kama. Let me say hello to my boss.
Abad, eh!
I am a messenger.
Yes, sir.
Mazyo, Gachku, Nkerere is my name. By the special grace of Chukokika Abiyama, I am the finance minister. And, uh, since the calling, I have been doing all I can, I give it all. Whenever anything is going wrong, I face it. And our leader Mazinamdekanu said, when mad crazy people like him join the struggle, what we have? Our leader Mazinamdekanu once more said, when mad people join the struggle, what we have?
Biafra be here.
I am proud to say, I'm one of them. Abumu, Anwadiata, ta, woo!
I agree.
My boss, remember my boss. My prime minister, remember my prime minister. With due respect, his word must come to, for females. What do I say? With, with due respect, his word must come to. Oh, sir, Tigo.
Oh, sir, Tigo, sir.
Oh, sir, Tigo.
We are not backing down.
Hey!
And Biafras not backing down.
Otoa.
We will go to any length to stand our ground, unshakable, unmovable.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You can bully us.
Yes, sir.
We don't care who you are.
That's right.
Fellow Biafras.
That's right.
We all know our website and we all know what to do. And we all know what we be doing every weekly, every day, daily basis. Please kindly visit the website, do the right thing. Do we all know what today is? Do we all know where we here today?
Yes.
Yes.
I left the United States of America down here for a reason. One, to see my prime minister. Number two, to make sure that his prophecy, his day, come to work. What do I say? Come.
Future.
Humans.
My boss, my prime minister, I respect him, I hold him for his word. My boss have been campaigning for about a year and his word must stand. We start this journey since the twenty ninth of November. And this beauty is where history make. We make history and we stand by it.
I said.
The journey that started on the twenty ninth is in preparation for history of my boss. When my boss said, he know the day Biafra will. My boss said, he know the day Biafra.
Come.
And what is the day?
December second.
Second.
Ife, eh, ife, eh, ife, eh, ife, eh, eh, eh.
Ta. Yes, sir.
Wow! Ife, eh, ife, eh, ife, eh, ife, eh, eh, eh. The Zulu government, they try to bully us and we bully them. They try to make us shake and we shake them. And we trick them. And we do them for one night. And we do them every fool.
They're good.
Oh, sir, Tela. Yes, Fras!
Again, eh.
Yes, Fras! We do the Zulu every fool.
Yes, sir.
We do the Zulu. My boss, my prime minister, he said December second, Biafra will be restored.
Yes, sir.
Biafra will be what?
Um. Yes.
On behalf of my prime minister and the Biafra have recorded the set of over sixty-eight million vote that give us the good message for the club, yes. On the second of December.
Yes.
Biafra will declare.
Yes, yes.
On the second of December. The day must not be changed.
No change.
Day must not be moved. We are unshakable, we are untouchable.
Yes.
Okay, look on the rule, eh.
Oh, bro.
He there, la, la, ha, ni ma, buka. Ni ma, buka, Biafras. When mad people like me join this struggle, Biafra will come. You can shake off, you can bully us. December second, mark your calendar, that is the day of come. Sinabiafra, Gabia.
That's a good one, that's a good.
Of course, all the mandate for over a year. My boss put the date and say Mazyogi, oh, boss ya. That date is not movable, it's not shakable. From the twenty ninth, we start the redisclosure process.
Yes.
We, 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 we read everything necessary, we prepare for this day. Today, December the second, mark your calendar, Biafra is restored. And please, when you sign your name, under the signature, United States, you are not going to be validated. Put your name, sign and date. I have been the United States Congress, I have met with the Speaker of the House, my Josie. And I told my Josie, the number three ranking in the world, I said, Mike, I'm going to Finland, we Biafras are going to Finland to reclaim, to redeclare Biafra on December the second. What do you think if I go to Washington tomorrow and tell them the day changed? We are not movable.
Otoa.
December the second, Biafra is restored.
That's right.
Otoa, Gadi.
Oh, sir, Tigo.
Oh, sir, Tigo. He did, eh, na, otoa.
They're good.
Ni ma, buka, Biafras.
Yes, sir. I love that.
They won't know.
Hey, what?
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 Biko, ka, ka konaka, konaka.
Konaka, yeah, 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 please. Applause, applause.
Yeah, yeah. APM, this is a, a clip for you to know, here you were only a finance minister. You are not an APM yet, but you caught the fire. Um, I would want to take us back to the memory line, some of, some of us that read things fall apart.
Tell about the questions in the test.
Hello, I'm here.
Okonkwo happened to come out to fight with Amalize the Cat. Amalize the Cat was in charge at that point in time, just like the days of Gulat and David. But something happened in the life of Okonkwo. Okonkwo hated his father because he was a poor man, he was owing everywhere. But that is something that man does pretty well, excellently. With all his passion, with all his heart, there was something he does well, that day came. Okonkwo mounted with his, uh, oja. As, I mean, Onoka mounted with his oja, as Okonkwo was confronting Amalize the Cat. The man that fought and killed every man all around, and Okonkwo was just a young breed, a yard that was just coming up. The fadda picked up the float and he, 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 he blew it. Ebube dikke. Ebube dikke. Okonkwo. Okonkwo, and Okonkwo will rise up and say, eh? Inspired that young man, that brought his, a strange, a very strange spirit to possess him. And he went after Amalize the Cat, walk heaven, and threw him onto the floor. That was the day Okonkwo become great in Omoa all over the world. I am presenting this to you today. I am charging you up again. The, the Biafras in Canada is charging you up, reminding you, making you to see that which you did. For a time has come, because there are still more things to accomplish. Ladies and gentlemen, Biafras all over the world, as you can listen, this is the man, when Canada was upside down, he said, what? No, it cannot happen. He came and called, even in the night, everything, make sure things happened. I said, Oya, make an election, and instantly it was done. Sir, I brought back that which you have stirred up. See where we have come, see where we are now today. Ladies and gentlemen, I welcome our prime min, uh, APM to you because he has something to tell us. Our APM, Honorable His Excellency, Chukunkere.
Yes.
The time is now. I hand over the floor for you, speak to your people, the Biafras, we are here to listen to you. They were. Yeah, so, so one guy was saying here, before our APM comes, he said, this, this is a man, I say, a man who never fought for leadership, but leadership was entrusted to him. APM, a great man, a legend, Zikora, I am putting you.
Yes.
Behold, our APM, he's seated, we are listening to, hear from him, you're welcome, sir, His Excellency.
Thank you, thank you very much, Canadian rep. You know, you just remind me of something so emotional and, uh, you know, sometime, people don't know what they have until they lose that. And first of all, as usual, we greet our leaders before us. And our leader Mazinamdekanu that once said, uh, when mad people that remain not evil people, good madness, not bad madness, join the struggle, and Biafra will come. What our leader Mazinamdekanu was actually saying is that when people that are born and stubborn, that can do everything, go to the extreme length to fight for their, for freedom of their people with love, joy and passion. Not for political gain, not for fame, not for money, not for anything. Just for freedom, for their people. You have some millionaires and billionaires today that love charity work. They sponsor thousands of children to any length, just to give back to community, to give them joy. And while you have some rich that are so stingy like P2B, they don't care about the, the poor ones. Some are born to save life. Some are born with love of God because God loved this world too much. And you can expect God to come down from heaven to do what we are doing today. He will use people like you, like me, those that care about humanity. We appreciate our prime minister. I call him my boss till tomorrow. That is why for the past few days, I've been sending message warning to those that want to drag his name to the mud. Those that want to destroy everything that he works for will hold everybody accountable. If I do anything wrong, hold me accountable. We have come a long way. This clip you just, uh, played, you can hear my voice. I was stressed out, just a lot going on. And why are these fools that are fighting me today? Without what I've been doing before our redisclosure, everything would have collapsed. Vote from homeland, making sure those that are protecting our land get what they need, everything! Uche in Finland actually want to give me heart attack, that evil man will not forgive. Uche sometime wake me up, two AM, one AM, one in the morning, three. Yes, why he call when I pick up the phone? I say, Uche, do you know what time it is? He say, hey, Mazy, and he knew. It might wake me up. I'm always on the phone more than half hours of the day. If we have twenty-four hours, I will be on the phone for like fifteen hours, talking, facing. And before going to Finland, on the twenty-seventh, Uche call me and say, Mazy, uh, look, uh, what is going on, uh, if we going to cancel the redisclosure or whatever, whatever, I say, Uche, cancel what? I say, Uche, but do you know the evil people? Evils people that will never make it to Biafra land because they are evil, we hold them. They twist everything, they turn everything around and say, uh, They twist everything, they turn everything around and say, Mazie, you're gay. And some people said, let's cancel it, cancel what? So we're not going to cancel it. I call some, like somebody like Chioma, we used to talk then, and Imma, we are still in the same page. I taught with people with common sense, not knowing that these people are just educated fools. I say, look at what going on. Imma is just shaking that, Imma, something bad is my happen, I say, no, but we are going. If we don't go, what are we going to tell the Biafra people? If we don't go, that means we have been bullied. If we don't go, that means we are fake service. I say, no, we must go. Me and our lobby, uh, we supposed to go together from the same, same flight. I call him, I say, look at what going on. He say, he's already on his way to the airport. We say, no, we must go. And at the same time, you know, we have that boldness in us, that no matter whatever we happen, even if we get to Finland, if the Finland Authority want to arrest us or what, we do nothing wrong. We are here to re-declare Biafra. We can't be bullied. Our freedom is non-negotiable. Other countries in this giant world fought for their freedom. All of us, both our lobby, we are so strong and say, no, we must go. Whatever we happen, let it happen. Because of destruction and phone calls, both from Uche, those are trying to discourage me, so that they can hear that Mazie Yokechukwu's grace said, oh, let's cancel it, cancel what? That can never happen. And the last time I am meeting of which I invited Elias, even Elias also assured Biafrans that he's coming to Finland. Just a lot going on, and I actually thought, when I get to Finland, maybe before the re-declaration, our Prime Minister would be released, not knowing that the European Union, they already planned just to, whatever they can do, so that Biafra will not be re-declared. And before I walk in the arena, there are Vision 555 was outside, yes, the video, uh, you know, I made from there, that Biafra must be re-declared, and that will be on the
Go give me my
On the second.
Children.
Please, uh, who is speaker, let me
Yeah, I've muted, I continue, sir.
And that will be on the second, even on the 29th, before we start our program for that very day. When the ministers are, you know, on line to march, march forward. I still have a video, I think it's the same Vision 555, which is here to play. I was still there yelling, talking about, must be on the second. And before going to Finland, if you can get the last time home meeting, I already hear some, something about some group of people, that is the same evil people we have, Ngozi and group, are planning to do whatever they did on the 29th, which we not stand, no way. By the special grace of Chukwokika Biama, you know, I just try to respect myself and be me, if not, if not, if I have made an itch. These people would have used the opportunity to destroy everything. I was just quiet, following the event, not that I don't know what to do. Because if these evil people know who I am, they won't play with me. These evil people know who I am, who they dealing with, Amwana, they will not mess with me. I can go any length, do anything to save over 80 million Biafrans' lives, even if it take my life. I don't care. By the way, what are you living for with our Biafra? In the next 30, 40, 50 years, we are gone. Most of us have lived more than half of our life that we have to live in this world. What will it profit you if you gain the whole world with that, freedom for your people, your children, your generation? Uh, rep from, from Canada, I was possessed every day, yeah. I was really, really, as the very, for over a year, we campaigned, we talked about December the 2nd. All of a sudden, one Nikonpo idiot, we tell me, December the 29th, what? That the House of Intel Nigerian government, we come to Finland, destroy this, that, that one, destroy what? It's all lies! I have said it time without number. We ratify everything on December 2nd. We might think, ratify it again. I'm not hiding, saying because we have some great leaders that have worked really hard, that they have to be with us in a time that matters. We're not going to have all these evil people to come and mess our history up. Do you know what it is, history of Biafra? When Biafra is re-declared, and the documents of Biafra, that are our children, we go through, that we studied in school tomorrow, it will be in our library, it's our part of our history, and we'll be reading about some dark history of some evil people. Both, this everything feasible. That day will come. Because my children, your children, will not have a dark history that they will be taught about or teach in school. We want good history. We come a long way. My fellow citizens, my fellow Biafrans, they are trying to break the spirit of this man, Mazie Yokechukwu Nkere, you looking at here. I love, you never walk. Uh, this is, they have jumped double tipa. Oh, good, so I'm saying, eh, what you go, that now I'm the APM, APM what? APM my foot. Before APM, I used to speak. Go back years, last year, last two years, listening to my speak, uh, speech during our fundraising or opening of our fundings, I always hit hard. Can't believe me, I'll tell you the way it is. APM that I, if somebody tell me a year ago, I'll be APM today, I'll say, how? I never ask for it. Both those that says CRUCI made me, who CRUCI made me, or I made CRUCI. Have they done quarter of what I have done? Have they contribute up to, all of them combined, have they contribute up to 10% of what I have put on to make, bring Biafra government to reality? This to pay the educated fools. Before going to Finland at the time, we are in need. When I call for emergency meeting, which Ngozi and her group declined, they said they are not coming. Then Imma and Chioma, both all this rough, uh, hungry, rough that can't even feed himself, that people buy diaper for or pampers for. During the meeting, how much are they able to come with? These broke people. I don't know what's wrong, why some people will just be so jealous, envy, angry, for what? I'm your last bus stop, you don't jump. Body coop one, coop two, I will put all of them in one basket, and we deal with them. After we done with the coop one, group, Imma group start warming up. And I'm pure Lily. And let me use this opportunity to tell all these evil people that are destroying my name, when you think you destroy my name, you are not just hurting the Biafra people, you are trying to destroy Biafra as a country, as a nation. You are trying to deprive Biafra from her freedom. All of you, whether you live in Switzerland, you live in Italy, Germany, France, remember you have embassy in America. They will knock at your door wherever you be very soon. Oh, boy, very soon, body content creators that are destroying the name of this innocent man, that make me their topic. You are pure name. The only what we will hinder me from doing that is that if I'm not alive. But as long as I'm alive, we hold all of you accountable. All of you, wicked people. My fellow citizens, what have I done wrong to these evil people? Just like the video that was played, I made it clear, I'm doing my best, everyone to know. And I'm believing that I still have to do more. I'm giving all that I have, sacrificing everything. My life is a stick, who I am is a stick, everything! Why the Nigerian government are fighting me? We have Ngozi and her group fighting me, Imma and his group fighting me. Even they are not trying to go beyond below the belt. But I'm your last. Okay, uh, our leader Mazinamdekan do everything right. But he made one mistake. The mistake he made by not holding the subotwa, the evil people accountable, when he realized it is a little bit late, by then, he's trying to get himself out of the mess, because at the time when he was looking for people to fight this fight with, the men are not available. Our Prime Minister get it right. He made a mistake too. There's some of the evil people that have springed up today, after his call for questioning, I personally alert him in some of them. He didn't really take it serious, he hurt me. Hurt me that. But this will not happen, forget that I'm laughing. This laugh, this small face you are looking at here, huh, how many make you? Ah, God. God prepare me for this journey. I went through a lot in my life. I've seen dark days in my life, human being did not help me. Evil some Biafrans here in Borim, they laugh at me, call me name. But later, when the grace of God start to shower upon me, they say they want to be like me again. Those that I thought are very, you know, very good, pretty good businessmen and whatever, they look at me like I'm on top, yes. A time! Over 10 years ago, before I even joined this struggle, God bless him, start showering upon me. Some Biafrans here in Borim, how do he do it? Before they know, my commercial on radio, playing 24/7, advance of my business, yes. Before they know, they see this man here you looking at, on TV commercial, one day I'm going to play my commercial for you. Commercial that I start over 13 years ago. Why some of these fools, Nikonpus, are not, they don't even know their left and right, are already be doing wonderful. Because of blessing! God bless good people. Evil people, especially the evil ones that are trying to destroy the freedom of Biafra people, God will not come from heaven to punish them, he will use me, somebody like me, and somebody like you, genuine people here. Stand your ground! Don't shake, don't let no one bully you. You live in a country that never designed for you. You live in a strong country called Nigeria, that's never for you. Some of you preaching one Nigeria, Nigeria is never designed to benefit you. Some of you believing in Nigeria. Nigeria is never created to be a country where you will share this and blossom, where the sky would be your limit. Nigeria is a gun! Go punish Nigeria. If I have what it does, I will burn Nigeria. And before I burn Nigeria, I will say, God, Chukwokika Biama, we have a part two of Sodom and Gomorrah. I will praise with the last speaker. I will say it loud, my people, get out of Nigeria, just like Lot and his wife. If you don't, I will burn everything down. If it is under one person that come out of that Nigeria, then what happened in Sodom and Gomorrah just happened. Then what happened in Noah's day, just repeat. Nigeria is a dream killer. Nigeria is built on a faulty foundation. Please Mazie, Honorable Minister of Information, can they play what Tafawa Balawa said about Nigeria? Thank you.
It's a big lie.
A big lie?
Yes, I want to substantiate my claim of saying Nigeria is a big lie. Please, listen to Tafawa Balawa, Nigeria's first Prime Minister. In 1948, I quote him, since 1914, the British government has been trying to make Nigeria into one country, but the Nigerian people themselves are historically different in their backgrounds, religious beliefs, and customs, and do not show themselves any signs or willingness to unite. Nigerian unity is only a British invention. Tafawa Balawa, 1948, okay. Now, listen to Inovya Sikwe, 1964. It is better for us and many admirers abroad that we should disintegrate in peace and not in pieces. Should the politicians fail to heed this warning, then I will venture Should the politicians fail to heed this warning, then I will venture the prediction that the experience of the Democratic Republic of Congo will be a chance play if ever it comes to our turn to play such a tragic role. Inaunya Zikwe, nineteen sixty-four, Aba Femi, Awolowo, Nigeria is not a nation, it is a mere geographical expression. There are no Nigerians in the same contest as there are English, Scots and Welsh.
Okay.
Nineteen forty-seven.
Thank you for featuring on State of Fame.
Thank you for him.
All you fools ignorance. Do you hear what Tafawa, Balawas or whatever that idiot name is? These are people that propose to have championed this useless country called Nigeria. They know this. What about Zik? Zik understand. And the funny thing is that all the useless leaders that have led that country understand Nigeria is a scam. Starting from Tafawa. To Zik, Aba Femi, Awolowo, Abiola, even Good Luck Jonathan, two years ago in Norway. Good Luck Jonathan quote this very, uh, from Tafawa Balawa. And the same idiot fool, God will punish, Good Luck Jonathan. Now talking about twenty twenty-seven. This idiot, Good Luck, make a war work. Good Luck understand that Nigeria is a scam. Nigeria is, Good Luck still talking about Nigeria. Evil people or cultic people that just want. A country where people would be dying. Where the blood of the innocent would be water we used to renew their consciousness. Is it people with one uniform in three hundred and sixty-five days? The people in that contraption are not trying to make it work. Because they are never one, can never be one. You can never miss blood with water. You can never miss light and darkness. Wherever there is darkness. Once light appeared, what happened? Darkness disappeared. And all the fools, all the governors, all those that have misled our people, we behave accountable. And to you today. Those that try to destroy Britain. All of you, chicken too know how to combat, all of you, can never succeed. Who deal with all of you? Subotwas, Ama, you and your group. Ngozi, you and your group, all of you. It's a promise. Will be dead with. Mark my word. This time, either we live or we die. We'll fight for who we are, we'll fight for what we believe. These evil people, after everything we have done, some of us. After singing the praises of us. They turn around to destroy us. Tell me, all these coos, all these groups that have springed up. Since November last year to till today. What have they brought to the table? What have they done for Biafran people? How have they benefit the Biafran people? Is he the fool in Switzerland? In Switzerland, is he able to go to the parliament here? And talk about Biafran? Is he able to talk to the government of Switzerland? To start talking about Biafran? Or to start condemning what is happening? In the territory of Biafran and in territory of Nigeria? Which when they say Nigerian Christians have been massacred, they're talking about Biafran, Biafran. How the majority, uh, uh, majority of Biafrans are Christians? Have this fool in Switzerland able to even get a liaison office? What have Switzerland bring to the table? And those in Netherlands? In Belgium? That want to destroy what we are doing here from United States of America? What have they brought to the table? We can see for the past few days, weeks, United States of America and Canada, God bless them. These people that are meant well for humanity. Are speaking up. Very soon, very soon, if Europe don't repent. If Europe don't change their everywhere. Europe will turn to a shithole country. Europe will be worse than a third world war, a third world country. They need to start doing what is right. They need to practice what they preach. About humanity, about freedom, about value who they are. We Biafrans know what value, family value is all about. Any family that brought up their children in ungodly way. We know what happened. That family faced destruction. That family faced condemnation. Because whatever they are in public, whatever they're doing will be opposite way. In our caution, we always ask, whose family is this child from? Because any child that is, eh, any child by that child, character, attitude, behavior. You can tell if that child is from a good family. If that child is from a good family, were brought up or trained, you can tell. And for those men and women that want to get into marriage life. They always ask, they always want to ask about family. What kind of family is this man from? What kind of family is this young lady, young woman, young girl from? Before involving themselves in social union, because it matters. Because if a man married from the wrong family, a family without value. That might have a big problem. Less than couple of months, weeks, he would be praying, asking for divorce. He will say, God, what do I get myself into? What about if a woman, a lady, a young girl? Get herself in a wrong family, marry the wrong man that is not brought up in a godly way or proper way, what happened? We value family life, we value who we are. It's about value. The West need to rise up about value. Who we are. And we Biafrans, we have similar value with the West. Why not Europe embrace Biafran? Why not Europe support Biafran? But rather, rather, they decide to support those that don't. Value their system. They decide to support those that respect their culture. You will see somebody from Afghanistan. They want to go to Manchester. And turn Manchester to Afghanistan, what they, oh God, evil is very, very bad. Sometimes you have to laugh it out. You see somebody from Somalia, they want to go to New York and turn New York to Somalia. Oh God. Practice what you preach, Europe, wake up. Stop your evil way. If not the master. The master that you decide to collude with. To kill the Christians of Biafran. To kill the Christians in Nigeria. When I still say Nigeria, I'm not, we are not aligning ourselves in Nigeria. Gobonu is in Nigeria, Kaduna is in Nigeria, and there is Christians in Bono and Kaduna. And we Biafrans Christians, we care about every Christian in Nigeria as well. That is why when United States of America and Canada, when they are condemning the genocide. War going in that country called Nigeria, we Christians of Biafrans, we also condemn it, because we are Christians majority. And we also condemn the killing of Christians in Biafran. Because when the West or America talk about Christians in Nigeria, they also talking about Christians from Biafran. Thank you, United States of America. All you doing so far? Recognizing Nigeria as a country of particular consign, as a threat to humanity. For the past few days, weeks, the mainstream media from US start speaking up. Even, uh, uh, Van Jones, a contributor at CNN, I do listen, you know, watch him sometime. Bill Maher, you know, have to even remind him, you know, that last week, he talked about what is happening in Nigeria. How Christians are being killed and massacred. Honorable Minister of Information, if you can kindly play the video by chance, if you know the video that I'm talking about. If not, that's fine. And if you can as well, please kindly show us how Christians are running from their accessory home in Nigeria. Because when we talk about Christians in Kaduna, Bono, we care about their life as well. And we also care about the Christians in Biafran. But for now, when United States of America, when they talk about Christians that are being killed by this Nigerian terrorist military. That have colluded with the jihadist Islamists. When you talk about Islamic jihadists, it's the same with the Nigerian military. They are all jihadists, conquests. They want to chase us out of our land, kill us, Islamize us. Thank you, I think you find the video, go ahead. Thank you very much.
Allahu Akbar. Hasunallah, wa di mal wa kil. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Munwa liwa Allah, wa nne jine bar ki. Na, wa ni karina suna shik, blazu zoi. Nakira wa ane, Allah Akbar, Allah Aba Munasara, konsu, Allah Akbar, Allah Akbar, Allah Akbar, Allah Akbar. Munwa liwa Allah. Wa nne jine bar ki, kira wa Allah Aba, wa nne mota ne, wa na bana wa, alhamdulillah.
The day and the dawn, no kin madar baqub, la rtrabla, na de tradem, adun koskuna wa tira na, ta denjowa. Ta denjowa koskuna wa tira na, no nganeta, ba demu tira na, si si. Thank you very much. Why do you end the gathering of devotion, stone blind eye? From focusing on what matters? Instead, the rush to recognize a terrorist organization as a state. United nation. Until they step up and do what is right, if they don't, we will keep calling them out, they are evil. And we urge every country around the world. To please make sure they elect good leaders. Make sure they elect leaders that care about humanity, that care about people's freedom. Leaders that will not support terrorism. Any country that have leadership support terrorism, that country is a terrorist. Any country that vote to support terrorist organization, please withdraw your vote. Because if not, you will destroy the good name of your country. If not, you are inviting the terrorists to your country. What is happening in Europe now, today, Europe of this day? Is because the Europe open their door, they allow these migrants, these from these different countries. They welcome them. They allow them in. And now these immigrants are telling them. Especially the immigrants from this, uh, the extremist jihadist terrorists. And I'm telling them that they come to talk about their land. They say they are taking over Netherlands. Sorry, uh, Biafrans in Netherlands, we don't mean to offend Netherlands, but we are speaking the truth. And Biafrans in UK, you know, we always speak the truth. And you all are aware of what we are saying here? That is most terrorist say they are taking over UK, I don't know where they taking UK to. Are they taking UK back to Syria? Or they want to turn, they want to turn East London to Afghanistan, I don't know how that will look like. Honorable Minister of Information, is there any video we have coming out from East London, how East London look like now? Can you, can you find something like that, please? They are turning East London to Syria, to Iran. Oh my God, it's very shameful. Europe need to wake up, they need to do what is right, align with those that, uh. Will come to your country, embrace your value, your caution. They said, if you go to Rome, you behave like a Romanian, you behave like those in Rome. You can leave, uh. You can leave a country like, uh. Uh, which country would I use as a case study? You can leave country, let me still use Syria, you can leave country like Syria and you go to Rome and you want to turn Rome to Syria. So why you just better stay in your country? If you so much love your caution, if you so much love the Syrian life, you so much love everything about the Islamic terrorists. Life or what you have embraced in Syria, why are you bringing it, why are you taking it to Rome? And for the Romania, we blame them as well. If you allow them from Syria to come to your country, it's also your fault. So that applies to every country in Europe that have opened their door, is their fault. Because first of all, you collude, you align with them, instead of aligning with. Those with your value, those that will respect your caution, your value. And we want to use this opportunity to talk to the leader of the free world. United States of America, the giant of the world. Practice what you preach. I know America is not finding it easy as well. They are having some, uh, you know, difficulty in some area to checkmate all these terrorists. Because America is also in play, they said that they are taking over America. I don't know where they want to take us to, but that will not happen. The leader of the free world, led by his excellency President J. Trump. Do the writing, you and your cabinet and the entire congressman. do the writing, you and your cabinet and the entire congressmen and women, both senate and congress. The American government do the writing. Practice what you preach. If you are against terrorism, don't support a terrorist country. We saw the drama, what happened at the UN convention, of which too many evil, niconfo countries voted. And America turned the other way. America vote no. With a reason. Why United States of America refuse to vote to recognize the Palestinian state? One is because of the government of the Palestinian so-called people or state. Their government is a terrorist organization. If America have voted yes, that means America supports terrorism. And if America have voted yes, that means America have endorsed the terrorists, Hamas, so they can keep ravaging the whole area territory. That means America support them to start bombing their neighbors, killing their neighbors. America decide not to vote yes. America have identified Nigeria as a country of particular consign as well. And I believe by now they have identified Nigeria as a terrorist country. A country that have tens of different terrorist organizations from ISIS to Uqaida. Nigeria even have the type of terrorists that bombed America, the Twin Tower in nine eleven. If America still have been dealing with a terrorist country called Nigeria, that means America indirectly are dining, aligning with a terrorist country. That means they are indirectly supporting terrorist country. That means America is indirectly killing the Christians in Nigeria and in Biafran. We plead and urge the United States of America to do the garden writing, to do what is right. We ask the United States of America to embrace those that embrace Western way of life, Western civilization. Christianity is civilization. We Biafran people, we don't want to go back to BC. We don't want to go back to five thousand years ago. The terrorist country of Nigeria, they want to drag us back. They don't love civilization. They don't want Western democracy or Western way of life. That is why they are killing Christians in Biafran. That is why they don't want Biafran people to be free. Because we are not one people. Because we don't want to be part of Nigeria. We encourage the free world, the leader of this free world, United States of America, to put Nigeria among the country that arm by arm. To put them in amber. We also ask and encourage the leader of this free world to stop selling arms to Nigerian terrorists. State. We want to remind the free world leader, United States of America, to remember what happened in Afghanistan. The same playbook of Afghanistan is what is happening in Nigeria today. In Afghanistan, after United States of America supported the Afghanistan government and they trained over two hundred thousand military personnel, they spent billions to arm the Afghanistan, not knowing, not knowing that United States of America, they are arming terrorists. After American withdrawal from Afghanistan, what happened? Not knowing that over two hundred military personnel of Afghanistan's Taliban. And the arms that America sell or supply to Afghanistan end in the hand of the terrorists. And that fuel the terrorism over the Middle East. And some of the arms that America left in Afghanistan is in the hand of Boko Haram in Nigeria. We urge United States of America to stop dealing with a terrorist country of Nigeria, to stop selling arms to Nigeria. If they sell arms to Nigeria, that arm will land and end in the hand of Boko Haram, ISIS, Uqaida, Ashwab, Hezbollah, Houthis and Hamas. They are all in Nigeria. America being a Christian country, funding God we trust and Biafrans are Christians, Juda- Judaism protest and also traditionalist. We have one common ideology. We have one God that we trust, Chukwueke Abiama Jehovah God. In God we trust. Our ideology align with the way we worship and that is what bring civilization. While we embrace civilization, the Nigerian terrorists embrace darkness. They want to take we Biafrans back to dark age and we say no. Biafran is already redyclare. We urge United States of America to work with the Biafran Republic Government in Gaza that is piloting the affair of Biafran people. We urge United States of America to work with our BDF, our defense forces so that we can combat this terrorism. If not, if these terrorists succeed and make Nigeria a safe haven for them, then we attack the West. Then we attack United States of America from there. United States of America, do the writing. And we appreciate so far what they have been doing, calling out Nigeria, putting sanctions in Nigeria. We Biafran people are grateful for that. We appreciate, we appreciate your leadership. We also appreciate members of the Congress and the senators that are speaking up, that are doing what is right to protect the innocent citizens of Biafran, to protect the Christians in Biafran and in Nigeria. Because since we are no longer part of Nigeria, since we are not Nigerians, we also share concern about the Christians that have been killed in Nigeria. No one is supposed to die. Every life matters. Biafran life matters. Christian life matters. And we also use the opportunity to call the leaders of the church, starting from the pope. If pope believe in humanity, if pope believe in God, if pope believe in, believe that Christian life matters, why is he quiet? Why is he not speaking up? If pope represent God, why is he not condemning the killing of Christians? Why is he not supporting Biafrans that are Christians to exit Nigeria? We don't let them. When there is a full blown war, then the next thing they will be running from all over corner of the world, coming in the name of Red Cross, coming in the name of bringing full supply, humanitarian system. Keep that garden humanitarian system aside for now. Come and save the situation. Come and save the situation. Come and save Biafran to stop what is going to happen. If they don't take action, is it when we start having casualty both in Nigerian side and Biafran side? Because what is happening now might lead to a full blown war. Where hundreds and thousands of people will be dying. Before you get to that, where is the so-called evil UN? Where is this humanity? Later on, they will start running like like what I don't know. Trying to be politically correct. Trying to show sympathy. Trying to find how to bring food in the name of doing what is right. In the name of let give them food. They are dying. Biafran people are dying now. Christians are dying now. Why not come and save the situation before it get worst? Stop preaching, practicing hypocrisy. Stop being a pharisee. Where is the outrage? A media figure, Bill Maher, asked this question last week. Where is the outrage that Christians, Biafrans, are being killed in Nigeria? Where is the protest? And we have this fake news owned by Euroba Dudua Republic people of evil contraptions. Channel news can't even report the atrocity that is happening, how Christians are being killed. CNN, fake, fake news that God we born. Evil news. News by the devil. CNN of blood sucking. They always want problem for humanity. CNN cannot even report it. Here, United States of America, First News have reported it several times. Kudos to First News. We appreciate you. I love this world. We Biafrans love this world. We love humanity. We are not violent people. We can coexist with our neighbor. But we have problem with extremists. We have problem with those that don't want us to leave. We have problem with those outside that want to change our mentality. They want to change our ideology. They want us to think like them. I cannot think like a nomadic person. I'm a Christian. I can never be a Muslim. We hate people like that. Please uh United States of America, we know you have a lot in your hand. We know it's not easy to deal with the situation around the world. It's a lot of work. I have meeting with members of Congress, interns of them. I see how busy they are. They walk around the clock, meeting after meeting, trying to solve this global conflict, trying to solve what is happening to humanity. It's not easy. But United States of America also need allies like Israel, good allies that can partner with you, that can work with you to make the situation easy. Recognize Biafran. Biafran will be your best ally from the West Africa, from Africa as a whole, will be best ally, will partner with you, will counter terrorism. A terrorist country cannot fight a terrorist organization. If you, United States of America, support Nigeria terrorist country, Nigeria cannot fight her own. Tunubu is a terrorist. Shetima is a co-founder of Boko Haram. If you support Tunubu and Shetima, you are supporting terrorists. And we plead with United States of America not to endorse or support Nigeria in any shambles, speak, rig, election in Biafran. Nigeria can conduct election in Nigeria, but not in Biafran. There is no election in Biafran. Anywhere you see the presence of Nigeria coming to campaign in our land, everybody accountable. And not enough. Nigeria has her problem. Let Nigeria go deal with her garden problem. Leave Biafran alone. But leaders of Nigeria like Tafawa, Balawa, Azikwe, Awalawa, Evil Good Luck Jonathan, they all said Nigeria is a scam. Fuck Nigeria. Evil Peter Obi. Peter Obi was in US just few days or weeks ago. Peter Obi said Nigeria a bridge criminal. Peter Obi never believe in Nigeria. And if you're a Biafran, you don't see the danger coming. Wake up. And for those of you that want my downfall, that want Biafran downfall, do you think if anything happened to me today? Then Biafran will, we come in the next second. Do you think if anything happened to the genuine pioneers of Biafran freedom? Then how will you get the freedom? Where will the freedom come from? But I assure you, evil people, your days are numbered to never be well with you. We Biafrans are grateful for those that are supporting this great cause. We say thank you. Our senior citizens like Bishop Comfort and others, we say thank you. We love you. We'll never forget. Biafran will never forget. Biafran, she reign both born and unborn, we never forget. We always be grateful how you try, how you all try to save Biafran life. Because Biafran life matters. Since part of the world have turned off and then deaf and them, deaf, deaf and dumb, deaf and dumb and the priests, the popes, the so-called men of God, the so-called those that see God dying with God, know where God live, where God is. They have abandoned you. Will you abandon yourself, my fellow citizen? As I'm speaking, back in Biafran, there is so, some of these fake pastors reverence at the civilization, some are doing their fasting and prayer or night vision. Night vision that have yet them no fruit. These clergyman have not taught them how to defend their land, how to combat the terrorism. If the Israelites have kept quiet, do you think there will be a country autarically called Israel today? We encourage the leaders of the church to preach to your followers. To your followers. That God asked them to defend themselves, to defend their family, their children. Not to be like Dundee. Not to be stupid. Our territory must be defended. Biafra land must be defended, our land must be liberated. I know I spoke over almost an hour now. Sorry, just that I have a lot of message to deliver. Please bear with me, I'm wrapping up. Please fellow citizens. We love you all, we love our dear country. Our land is bleeding. This Islamist jihadist terrorists. They are in our land. And we are fighting them back, we are chasing them out of our land. The world will bear us witness. Even the satanic Britain, UK, will bear us witness. Because the monsters that we are fighting, they are now in their doorstep. We Biafrans are following the event of what is happening around the world. Now they are fighting, are kicking back against this monster terrorist, the jihadist. The same monsters we are kicking out of our land. It's happening in Netherlands, in Sweden, in Norway, in France, in Belgium. So where we Biafrans are crying, where we Biafrans are asking that we need to be free. They should support us or leave us alone. They see the reason why, they see what we are fighting for. And our message to Israel. Our leader Mazin Namdikan made it clear as well. If they don't let Biafra go or support Biafra. Their land will be overrun by this Islamist jihadist terrorists. Because what we are fighting against is Islamist jihadist terrorists. And the Nigerian military, over ninety percent of them are Islamist jihadist terrorists. Just the same thing that happened in Afghanistan. Over ninety percent of Afghanistan military are Taliban. United States of America, I wish. The weapon, the equipment that you guys, America delivered to. To Afghanistan military, I wish you guys deliver, America deliver that to Biafran defense forces, that would be great. Hey, I can appear Nigeria. This we Nigerians, we Biafrans, we open our arms. To receive anything receivable, that will be for Biafran help. That will be for Biafran benefit, to serve humanity, to serve Biafran life, to serve Christian life. And to serve the entire world. Because we Biafrans stand for light. And we also remind, want to remind. The great country, the leader of this free world, United States of America. That Biafrans contribute. Contributed. To make America great again. Out of hundred black Americans. Thirty, thirty are Biafrans. Last time I check. Out of ten black Americas. Ten black Americas, three are Biafrans. Because they have the root. From what happened over four hundred years ago. So Biafrans participated in making America great again. For that, we are urging United States of America, proudly recognize Biafra. Biafra that I embrace your way of life, your culture, your ideology. Instead of recognizing or working with the Islamic terrorists of Nigeria. Nigeria hate you with passion, Nigeria. Is part of BRICS or working to be part of BRICS. They don't embrace or recognize America as the leader of the free world. We Biafrans do. Thank you fellow citizens. Together, we can all make this world great again. Together, we can all fight. And make Biafra great again, together, Biafrans. We can all work in unity and liberate our territory and liberate our land and be free again. Together, we can work with United States of America and combat this terrorism. Together, we can as well practice what the great president J. Trump said in UN summit. Assembly, that every nation, every country need to protect their in, uh, inter, uh, territory. Please Biafrans, our freedom is in our hand and it's our job. To free ourselves, our action, what we are doing, we free our leader Mazin Namdikan. Our action, what we are doing, we free our Prime Minister Mazie Simon-Ehba. The world is watching. The satellite is now turning to Biafraland. They are following and anywhere you come across any post. From United States of America condemning the evil country called Nigeria, retweet, post it. Everything need to go viral, the world need to hear our story, they need to know what we are going through. Place all the subotwa, the evil one's disease from your evil, you cannot break my spirit, you cannot stop me. You don't know who I am. If you know who I am, you won't mess with me. And for those that have underrated me, look down on me. I'm extreme stubborn to get this freedom. I'm extreme stubborn to do what is right. I love this global community, I love this beautiful world that is created by. And for all the haters. Both in Twitter space, from your different platform, making me your topic. Calling evil upon me, if you think you are doing me, you're not. Rather, you are fighting against the Biafran people. All the evil people. That are accusing me falsely. The air you breathe will be your enemy. The water you drink will turn to poison. You will have this sleepless, nice sleepless dream. Everything evil, everything good will work against you because you are evil. Leave this innocent man alone. I'm a messenger. Let me work for my people, for Biafra. Thank you and thanks you, uh, fellow Biafrans and the rep from Canada, you and your team. They will, I know it's late in Europe and I just have to voice out and say the way it is. Biafra is here, Biafra is trending, let's burn down the zoo. Nigeria must go there, Nigeria is never a country. From the leaders, from Tafawa, Balawa, to Namde Azikwe, Awolowo and others. If they say it before you, we are born. This quote from Tafawa, some of you were never even born, even maybe Peter Obi. If you can hear from this man that Nigeria is not a country. If Nigeria never a country about fifty, sixty years ago. How is it a country now? If you're one of those that are believing that Nigeria is a country, you are a fool. You are a尼康普 educated fool, thank you.
There were. There were APM. There were APM. Uh, what are you, are you there, there uncle? Okay.
Yes, I'm here, uh, sorry, trying to get ready for work, uh, so yeah, I'm here, thank you APM, we appreciate you so much, sir. My rep, um, what would you, um, want me to do now? Wait. There's a speaker.
Okay.
There's a hand up.
Okay, I just wanna pardon me if I batted too long, you know.
No, 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 you're, you're.
You know, when you have enough to say. You, you move by the spirit, that's what it is. And those that have ear, let them hear. Then, that's what it is.
Okay.
As far as this freedom, we must get it, thank you.
Okay, we have a. Uh, we'll move in that light now, APM, in the light. Of your world and in the spirit of your world, uh, we, Canada. Brigi, this baby that was born yesterday. We have a gift for you because you come to visit us. Because you come to see that thing you instituted. Uh, how is he working and we want to. To give you a gift, today we are giving you.
I'm sorry to interject, I think maybe we should go with the two hands that are up first before you.
They'll, they'll flow now, because that's the next thing.
Uh, rep, uh, I'm gonna. I'm gonna, uh. I'm sorry for interrupting you, Canada from US, I think we, uh, we are neighbors. Next time. I want to see every Canadian. You know, uh, in Washington DC, if we have anything going on, please, if not every Canada, at least. We have to, uh, Canadian present is really needed. Because when US make move, uh, Canada is making move and if you notice what is happening lately. It's like Canada is even speaking up more than US and I don't know what going on. So please, next time, uh, Minister Yunis, no excuse, next time please, uh, we have enough time for, uh, notice. Uh, like couple months before any event in Washington DC again. Every Canada, I want to see all of you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um. You, you can see that there are more events. You can see there is hope. That invitation is key. Uh, thank you, sir, we will not fail you, we will not fail you. Um, let us run because we have our hands up so they can flow with me now. Uh, Canada, we are presenting a gift to you of a thousand. Seven hundred Ajema for coming to us today, thank you.
There are, there are.
There were, thank you. Thank you, and also thank you for that.
Thank you, Canada.
Our convention, the spirit on the second was really, really high. If you know what possessed me on that second of December twenty twenty four. Was high because whatever they say twenty nine. You cannot, uh, uh, you cannot re-declare, uh, Biafran accounting vote and order than the delegate and order. So that very day, I awaken and remind Biafrans that this is the day. And our honorable Minister of Information here also step up his game in making it big. So that is big. Uh, I don't know if you all heard from Marco Rubio. On the eighteenth last month, uh, during our hearing, he, what did he remark on, what did he talk about is the second.
Second December.
Those that want to put in Wikipedia, do whatever they want to do to counter every time, we declare, we declared before it used to be, I declared, now he's saying we, who is we? It's the second, thank you.
Thank you, we're, we're in the line of the spirit, thank you. Okay, um. Okay, uh, Yunis, you can go ahead with the hands up.
Yeah, let me, let me help, she said she's squaring up for work.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ichye, thank you.
Yeah, uh, non so, Victor, then so over to you, your hand is up.
Alright, a very quick one, please, thank you very much, everyone, thank you very much, Canada, thank you very much, APM. Uh, I just want to confirm everything that you have said and everything that you are doing. We are standing with you, we are standing with Brigi. And we'll continue to do what we know what we must do. Uh, this fight is not for one person, it is not just, uh, for our leader Mazin Namdikan. It is not, uh, all about, uh, our Prime Minister Mazie Simon-Ehba Njoku. It is not only about you, Mazie Ogechukwu, is SLS Ogechukwu, no. It's about us, it's about each and every one of us, so for that reason, I have nothing much, I have nothing less, but. I just want to support that powerful speech of yours and everything that you have done. We are beginning with the sum of twenty Ajema to conclude with what I have already contributed, thank you very much, thou wast much of our time, God bless each and every one of us.
Mommy. God bless you. There were.
There were, there were. There were mighty dot, the dot of the mighty, over to you, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yeah, go, make a move.
My son does.
Minister of Information, eh, Governor Sister Yunis, you there, buddy?
Ah, buddy, my friend today.
Yes, um. Yeah, greetings, your excellency, um, APM. Um, I greet you, um, uh, Bishop, I greet the US rep, Mazie Mndike.
There were.
Um, I greet the Canada rep, um, Sister Yunis and all the Canadians who are listening today, our hosts. Um, I thank you guys for doing this as we march on. Um, inch by inch, we are inch closer to our freedom. Uh, you know, based on what some videos I was played today, some, there's something that I, I, I might notice. You know, if, if, you see that single act that our APM came up and did on the, uh, on that podium that day. On that second, that, that single act actually saved us. Do you guys know, some people don't even understand the date, some people don't even understand the dates, what that dates means, that single act saved us. If not, everything would have been, if we have succumbed to that twenty nine, everything would have been gone by now.
Mm-hmm.
Everything would have been gone by now, that single act saved us and saved the face of our Prime Minister. So. For those of us that stood with him and believe in that second. You should be proud of yourselves. So anyway, um, that are facts and those that Nigeria is happening, Nigeria is happening to them. Just like our Mazin Namdikan says, I can share the banner, no, no. All those, all those people, all those, all those, all those crooked medias in, in Nigeria, even the ones from Biafra. Who joined them, who joined them. Nigeria don't happen to that one in Abuja now, that's just the beginning. Every single one of them, Nigeria will happen to them and their family. So as we march on, anyway, I wanted to, I wanted to join my, my US rep. In, in taking color note for the US with fifty Ajema and also fifty Ajema for today, making it for Ajema, thank you.
Thank you very much, mighty dot.
Thank you, thank you.
That very morning, I'm not in the program to speak. I say I have, I'm gonna do that to wake everybody, remind everybody. Why we are in the meaning and the significance of what we are, what this second is, so. Yes, that's what happened, thank you very much, mighty dot.
Thank you, mighty dot, thank you. Honorable rep.
Akama Rama Kai Ga Koru Mighty Dot Banyo. Akama Rama. Mighty dot, we appreciate you, sir, you have always been consistent, God bless you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, honorable rep, where are we on your program? Okay, honorable Mndike, over to you, sir, your hand is up.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir, thank you, sir. My APM, you, you, you have always delivered.
Oh.
You have always delivered and I, and I tell you, um. That, that, uh, video, yeah, brought back memories, that was the first time.
that, that, uh, video, yeah, brought back memories. That was the first time. I figure, well, something must be not right, you know?
Mm, mm.
Uh, because all along, you know, I didn't know what was going on. We just, you know, came and followed the program, but when you came on
Mm-hmm.
on the podium and, and made us, you know, just cheered us all up and, and asked what day was this? I said, hmm, okay, something, 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 something's up. So I am thankful, I am thankful for, for you standing your ground, you know, and, uh, I'm gonna also add, uh, uh, fifty Ajema to the, uh, one that I already contributed. Altogether, I've come to three hundred Ajema. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you, sir.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I believe we send a message today to, to the sub- to us. If they like, they can be in Switzerland, they have, uh, they have where we can easily let the, you know, the guy to answer questions, don't matter. Because enough of this nonsense.
Right.
Enough, it's enough. We have a great translator called Ted Cruz. Ted Cruz is not a, a Biafra, but he's consigned. And he's picking up for Christians, picking up for Biafrans. If he can be doing that, why do we have to have sub- to us among us? Instead of them doing the right thing, they are doing opposite. Who will deal with all those evil people? They have to repent and do what is right. Either they repent, do what is right, or they will leave us alone and even leave Biafra land. Who banish them? Because how more we ban? If this make it there, we'll go, you know, hold them accountable. Unless those that we don't know about, unless that, thank you. Uh, Honorable Minister of Information.
There were A P M. There were, sir. Appreciate you, sir.
There were. Thank you.
Well, there were. Uh, Ochendu, one Biafra. Ochendu, one Biafra, over to you. We are on, um, donations, donations, donations. That is where we are on, um.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, my honorable Minister of Information. You, you really did a great job. Um, my A P M, I really appreciate God Almighty for giving you the privilege, the strength, the knowledge you are using to, uh, move these, uh, cause ahead. Because, uh, what you did on that second of, um, uh, December twenty twenty four was a history because God, uh, manifested through you. So I really appreciate you for what you did. And in the same vein, I just want to, um, to commend my, um, my minister, uh, my, my rep, Minister, uh, Emenike Mazze Emenike, with the sum of fifty Ajema just for, to, to, to make it more of what he has contributed on behalf of, uh, EDA State. I appreciate everyone who have done for today, Canada, um, uh, eh, uh, uh.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
God bless us.
Thank you. Honorable Minister of Information. You know, it's been a long time. We start fighting these monsters, right? Uh, you have a, a clip of your video on that, the second as well, right?
Yeah.
You know, we need to remind Biafrans so that they can know that. Yes, oh. Yes, we'll fight, we'll be fighting at some day for the start of this game and then we just don't want, but wanna make sure that, uh, we don't think after that we destroy everything we have worked for. So we cannot.
So you want me to get the video and play?
Yeah, you can just take clip or.
Wait, let me go looking for it. All right. Let's take, uh, which hand is up? Let's, uh, let's sing for the last speaker before.
Yes, um, Mazzy Ochendu, we did sing for him. Akamarama Kai Gakuru Mazzy Ochendu. There were.
There were. There were. The floor is open, donations, 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 support Canada. Support Canada, support Canada, support Canada. You know, when we talk of Canada, it reminds me something and, um, when we sat down and saw that Canada happened to have been the first country or nation to strike Nigeria by digging into A P C and P D P terrorist group. And praising their ex, uh, politicians who ran to Canada to seek refuge. Uh-huh. Canada did something great. So that takes us back to, uh, Amaka. Amaka in Canada. You know, people didn't really understand the significance of what, uh, B R G I E did when Nigeria wanted to use, uh, Amaka to shine. Hmm. But B R G I E used that opportunity to tell the entire world that Nigeria is a terrorist state. That's why everything we do here, just like A P M speak now, some people don't take it serious. We come here now, we write later, we submit. You see him going to Washington D C to have meeting with the Speaker of America, with the Chairman of, uh, Foreign Affairs and with all the top, top lawmakers in America. People make caricature of it. The way politics works is that you sew the seat now, then go back and sit down and wait for next tomorrow. You will see the result play out. So, me, I wasn't shocked when I saw that it is Canada that opened the Pandora box of Nigeria affairs and foremost before Americans started following. Because I remember, uh, B R G I E already laid a foundation when they wanted to use, uh, Amaka to shine. So, Canada was where it happened. Uh-huh. And Canada lived up to it. Right? Your liaison offices is very important. Your presence in your country is very important for you to make it viable and to stand. We come to your town hall meeting like this, we spend five hours, eight hours, six hours. Some people take it for a joke. Yes. They don't really understand the significance of it, but with time, you will know what it means because it is an opportunity to create awareness and to establish the fact that the Biafran people are here and that they have a government. So we use this opportunity to encourage everyone.
Please, uh, Honorable Minister of Information, while you're speaking, uh, Minister Yunis, uh, the warrant, uh, can you put some in the cup for me so I can help? We should, where will I start from? Go ahead, go ahead.
Is our, is our A P M one or it is to.
A P M, which one do you want?
Oh, yes.
Is it, uh, Serimi or Jack Daniel's, uh, Shadow Day? Uh, Bailey, which one do you want?
China, China word is open already. Oh, yes.
Here we are in the convention, or A P M, can we go ahead?
Let me get the cup ready.
Yeah, go on, yeah.
Okay. A P M, you serve, you the trouble. You know, you know the kind of fights that we will fight. That is why you want me to go and bring this video to come and play? Because.
If you want, right, few days now, some might be playing their own, say they declare and declare, declare, I don't know what they declare. And even I came across, uh, when this woman, Minnie Wuma, was saying, after counting the votes, they declared. Twenty nine, the vote have not been counted.
Uh-huh.
People can be foolish. You say we declare, no, it used to be, I declare, I declare, who you declare? It's five hundred and seventeen delegates.
That reminds me. That reminds me.
After the vote, go ahead, man.
In another video, she said that now that we have declared on twenty ninth, the result of the voting will come out in two weeks.
And the result is out in how many days? I go ahead, go ahead, Mazzy.
All right, sir.
Minister is online.
Recording in progress.
Go on, you're. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go on, you're mine, man.
Yes, wow. This was brilliant. Oh my God.
Biafra was here. I want you to understand, it is only in Biafra land that people are not running away from their ancestral land in the entirety. In Eurobar land, people are fleeing the ancestral land. In the northeast, northwest, middle belt, people are fleeing from the ancestral land. It is only in Biafra land and the government of Biafra made it possible. But you know what? They would like you to believe that Simon Eba is the cause of insecurity. No, I am the solution. And the only way they can get to you is by kicking me out of the way, which is not possible. I have come. After I end up in Nigeria, Biafra will be free and enjoy freedom. Biafra will know the importance of freedom and what I'm in today in five years to come. Thank you.
Oh, billion.
Now, listen, you know, they remind such good people.
So, when they, when they stopped me from having, they did not expect that I would get the comment.
Uh-uh. I know some people would be feeling in their punch that day. Just like the one I did in the morning. The one I did in the morning is passed from this call to that evil camp. They said that what, the way, the way I destroy this in the morning, destroy what? I did what is right.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
We have history to tell. Yeah, I see your eye.
Is my voice coming out? I don't know if my voice is coming out there. Is my voice coming out, please? Let me know if my voice. Thank you. There may be delay in transmission, but, uh, I hope all of you can hear me. We have made it. And the dreams of the Prime Minister has come to be. Like you said, in the video I played, they want him out so that they can come for you. They did not take him out. This time, for bad, he went to prepare and to come back for the battle that lies ahead. If he was here with us, maybe we wouldn't have done our best. But today, we are doing our best and he is very, very proud of us wherever he is. And he's watching us and seeing everything. So keep up the good work. I welcome everyone to this very hall, where the Biafra National Anthem was brought to fruition. I salute everyone that have come from all walks of life because it's not been easy. This is what my Supreme Leader had dreamed and this is what the heroes and heroines of Biafra had dreamed to be. And today we have made it a reality with the vision of one man, the indomitable of Atobe, eh? The Etihadetone. The one for that. The man of the year, the man of the season, the man of the moment, the man everyone wants his head on his spine. The hope of the Biafran people. I very soon come. The pride of the Biafran people. The man that has no resemblance in all he does. Without him, we wouldn't all have gathered here today. And so we have thousands and many reasons to be so, so grateful to him. He led a good foundation. He fought a good fight of faith and we are living to his legacy. That is why all of you, the cabinet officials, starting from the C O S down to every cabinet member, uh, here present in Finland to make it a reality. They said I should not pass from the airport to come down to El, uh, Helsinki and to head down to Latif. But I am surprising them today that I am in Latif today. Above all, I am speaking
Yeah.
to everyone in the convention.
Yeah.
It is mind blowing. And it is intriguing that technology can connect us from all over the world to participate in everything that we do. Yes. I welcome the American delegates that have spoken. I welcome and I thank the Ambazonia delegate that spoke yesterday and the Eritrean government president. And most especially, Michael Rubin, who has been doing a great job for us and our indomitable Biafra political and diplomatic engine. Our Elias, 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 the great.
I, I was watching, huh?
We thank you for the great work that you're doing because, um, if not you, the Biafran people wouldn't have attended the height that we have gone now. It is one thing to hire services and it is another to get what you paid for. Elias, the Biafran government are so proud of you and my Prime Minister will be super proud of you as we walk ahead to the next stage. It is our dream. Like the last speaker said, and we decide how we make this a reality. People would not come to fight for us to make our dreams a reality. We are the ones to come with the template and to put it to work. That is why I acknowledge the works of my Prime Minister because never a time has the Biafran people organize themselves this good that they now have a government and a template and every arms of government and everything needed for a nation to stand. The Prime Minister is the man that has made that history. And every one of you that stands with him and make it happen, your names will be on the monument of Biafra in years and centuries and millenniums to come. Countries and people contributed cow of each family to be able to raise spawns and fight for their independence. And today their names are written in monuments. And all of you here gathered representing the entirety of the forest state of Biafra, you have not disappointed the Prime Minister since he embarked on this quest of sacrificing himself for anything that will happen for Biafra to come. Our Supreme Leader gave him the mandate and said, he need men of steel and of valor, men that can stand the test of time, men that can do anything for Biafra to come. Anything for Biafra to come is what he has done in Finland. Relinquished his political career and then set the face, put his head on the line to see that Biafra is restored no matter what happens. And today, he is not taken away from us. He is here and he's watching all of you, everything you do, decisions you take and whatever that you're doing. I would say it is a time of progression because he's giving us a test to see how you can be resilient, decisions you take at this time. to see how you can be resilient, decisions you take at this time, what you will do and how you will do it and how you can forge ahead to the next stage. I salute everyone that have made it to this very day. Let me not forget things that led us this far. From nineteen twenty-nine, I salute our women who took their grounds to protest against the injustice of the existence of the Biafran people. That is why women in our time, we need to cherish them, take care of them because they stand to do things unimaginable. That was nineteen twenty-nine and if you are not aware, the colonial terrorist police supervising those ones that they recruited in Nigeria ordered the destruction of their lives when they protested against the taxation that were imposed on them against their own will. Before this time, their husbands and chiefs had become slaves begging at the mercy of the terrorists just like it is happening today. Please forgive me, I don't have a script, I am not reading a script. So I will be precise and when I am done, I will leave this stage. So we paid tribute to them because they fought for the same freedom that we see today. Coming down to nineteen forty-five, the slaughter and the genocide, you are all aware of it. And we call on our researchers and those that have shown interest in Biafra to dig more to understand what happened in nineteen forty-five, how the Biafran people were slaughtered. Then we see had the likes of Mary Sliso. Mary Sliso played a vital role to make sure that the rights of women was not violated in the Zulu族共和国 of One Nigeria under the contraption of Britain. Mary Sliso played a very big role to see that we get liberated. That is why she is one of our icon, even with the fact that. The zoo has fallen. They don't know. Sorry about the break of the transmission. Mother Edipo did a great job to see that we are not also slaughtered. That is why you may hear how her name has been immortalized in some places in Nigeria because she fought for the same freedom. Even as it happened that before the Biafran genocide war started, she was still a stunned supporter of One Nigeria. And then she had to be imprisoned so that we can move forward, so that she wouldn't be a disruption. But I tell you that she fought for freedom. Then when we come down to the heroes and heroines of our time that have done a great job. The January fifteen nineteen sixty-six coup was never an evil coup. But that is what they had taught you in school. We thank God that the youth of this very day have been able to dig deep and to bring out the lies and propagandas against the Biafran people. The January fifteen sixty-six coup was actually to defend the livelihoods of the Yorubas and the Middle Beltans that were slaughtered on daily basis. So like I had Rasta man said, our momo, no go, he lot and he don't stop. The help that we try to put to other people to save their lives is what they actually are not did. Turn the barrel of gun against us because we became the endangered species because we were the only people that were able to take a post there. To rise up to say the Islamic Jihad's invasion of Othman and Fodio would not come to play in our own time. We rather die, we rather keep fighting to the end to see that our babies, women and children are not slaughtered. I give gudos to Kadona and Dog. I give gudos to General Lobosi and Colonel Lobosi. I give gudos to Adewale, I give gudos to many and many of them that were of the northern structure that also took part in the coup of January fifteen sixty-six coup. It was a path to freedom and a path to liberation. And then we got into the nineteen sixty-seven war after the Aboria Court. They took us on our ways. They started the war and they fought and they shot the first bullet from Khaken when you're coming into the, 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 the then cross river state of One Nigeria. We fought gallantly, we were defeating them on daily basis until they call on Britain that Okokondem was making news on the radio that we have overrun their men. Fear gripped Gowan and what did Gowan do? Gowan decided that, oh man, we have to make sure Ojuku Boys does not win this war. And I tell you, it was not Ojuku Boys that were fighting, but it was the soldiers and the spirit of Biafra that were fighting. I salute everyone here that have come today because nations gathered for their independence to come. America did send and they had just fifty-six delegates. But today, the Biafran people have gathered over thousands to ratify the results of the referendum which we started in February. And this is remarkable that on the screen we just saw that on the second of December, the ratification of the referendum results has given the power to the Prime Minister to declare the independence of United States of Biafra. That figure stated there is awesome and history will speak of it and everyone will remember and understand what it means. The American think tank groups that are keen in, please take the message back and put it back into the system of America so that it will go further. I also give thanks to the father of Simon Egbah in Finland that spoke before for standing tall to secure and protect his own son. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That was a good one.
Thank you, APM.
Thank you very much.
Abalawa, you were the bomb there.
That was a very good, very good.
Very good. Your brain, the heart. Hey.
Yeah, we, we did not disappoint at all. We do what we have to do.
It's a script.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone.
Okay, okay. We're wrapping up, right?
Yes, we're wrapping up.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Who rap? Over to you.
Okay, um, Akalemono. Um, I'm glad in today that that is this kind of, uh, energy that just came up again today. And that made us to go back to the memory lane. I'm happy for that. And it has gone down in history for Canada for, you know, starting that and then in a benchmark for that. I appreciate every one of you. Then, uh, APM, those people you met in July and I want to call their names again, they are the ones that gave you that gift. And that is going to mark for my closing remark. Casmera Opera one hundred. Sister Nkemhonanya one fifty. Metu Maribe, one hundred. Yonex B, one hundred. Honowa, one hundred. Dorothee, one hundred. OJ. She met one hundred. Emmanuel E, one hundred. And plot, yes, one hundred. Kismat, fifty. Francisca N, one hundred. Elizabeth, one hundred. Bibiana, one hundred. Emmanuel O, one hundred. Omar, one hundred. Okedi, fifty. Neka E, one hundred. Jane, one hundred. Ambrose, one hundred. Honome, one hundred. And Exta, fifty. These are, those are your people and that said, no, they want to give you a gift.
Yeah.
So these are the, so, um. APM, thank you so much for coming around and it's been a wonderful time stay, sharing with you and speaking to us. Then other Biafrans that have come, please, I appreciate every one of you. It's awesome. All the cabinet members, thank you. Honobomenike, I cannot forget your name. I cannot forget you. I cannot forget the way you laugh. Such a calm man. You are wonderful. Uh, my mom, the only bishop, according to my APM, the only bishop he knows. I thank you so much, Mama.
Well, I'm not lying, no. Yeah, I don't know. Is there anyone, you know?
Anytime we gather, when I see you, I see the, our ancestors guiding us anytime. Olokwa, somebody was calling you love wanting to thank you so much for everything you're, all the, all the things you do. Every one of you, I appreciate you. Thank you for all you've done. Metukokeke, lead you back, keep you stronger as never before. They will continue until we march into Biafra land. Oichie, I've never forgotten you. You are such, a, a certain a man that epitomize, you know, excellency. Thank you for everything. Thank you. Because I, I, I'm short of words.
Instinct.
Short of words. Thank you.
Yeah, we love you all.
Love you, Canada, yes.
We did not hear, we did not hear the voice of our COS. Our COS will go, we will take you to Alakma.
Is he, is he here?
A remark from Wada OJ, please. I'm pleading, uh, you know, um, uh, you know, you say plead, please, every Biafran, this is time that you support your freedom. Benjamin Netanyahu will not come from Israel to fight your fight for you. President Trump will not come from America to fight your fight for you. They can only support you. And I, you know, applaud you for stepping up. Please, it's time that every Biafran, let's take our differences apart. This is not time for that. Please do everything you can. If you used to support with the little you have before, if you can double it, especially not double it. Biafra is trending and we need to help this trend to continue. Because we need to let the world know how much we ready, how much we yearn for our freedom, please. I encourage everyone and thanks for those that have been supporting one way or the other. Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, well. Yeah. They will. They up?
They say hand up.
You have two hands up.
Yeah, two. Okay, Julie, Julie, over to you, Julie.
Tito is here.
Tito.
Tito has just arrived. Julie, go ahead.
Okay, um, this is Julie and I'm Canadian too. I'm sorry I did not join early due to some important commitment that I, that is unavoidable. And that's why I didn't join from the start. I'm so sorry for that. And I just wanna give my token to welcome APM to our country, Canada, and to appreciate him for all the work he's doing for us. And especially, um, how he retrieved the day. That was the dream of our Prime Minister on that second. It is really spirit lifting. I wanna say welcome to Canada and thank you with a token of fifty Ajima. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Wada Julie. Onyachi may raise the namada po ina.
So our, thank you. Our Minister Tuto, I think you're gonna be the one that will send message to all the subtores and tell them what they need to do, whether they should leave us alone or they will keep sabotaging because they will find themselves in a big trouble. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, my APM. Yeah, I'm preparing to go to work. Oh my god. I woke up, I saw and I say, oh, Holy Ghost fire, I must log in. I really missed Kai. There were everybody, Kai. You know, this time the friend is the problem.
Did you hear? Did I clear my throat?
Ah, good morning, everyone. Kai, I just want to thank you, my APM. Aramkoinam diponis, I thank you so much. Yes, so thank you all the Canadians and the cabinet members that are present. Oh, Information Minister, Yaya Abalawa, good morning. Yes, APM, I will tell them because yesterday I saw a clip from that madman, madman woman that said they want to catch you. I said, let them catch me first before they catch you, oh. I just say we want to catch. Okay, get it. He's very wicked. He's worse than Ngazi. I said, no problem. Come and catch me first.
They are confused, nah. They have tried everything, do everything they can. I do, yeah, they.
They have their best election.
I have, you know, I add like, you know, what is this man named in Africa? India, in, in the mean of Uganda, right? I just like balance. I don't want to go nowhere. Where they want me to go before. I wonder.
They said they're doing the election in November, the first Biafra election.
That, no, that one is Ngazi group. With the, the chamber election of Nigeria, which we don't endorse Nigeria election in Biafra land and there won't be election in Biafra land, so.
I imagine that.
Ngazi want to do their own the same day, what they not, what they miss.
Can you imagine that?
No, let me know. You guys have stayed for a very long time, please. I want to support my APM with ten thousand Ajay Bookme that was sent to Itana Admin. Sister Yunis, there were, where is a, Agachas I used to, I used to disturb me.
Are they here, man?
I don't see you. Kai, sorry I joined late. Don't be angry, but it's better I joined later.
If you hadn't come, if you hadn't come today because somebody had already bought drink for you. I'll go pack it through your, through your embassy. Then any other way you see, any other way you see, you take.
In fact, because of that, make it twenty thousand.
Now, let Tito. If you, if you say something.
No, I was saying, do you have something else to throw in so that she can double it more?
You people should leave my sister alone, no.
How's it to my admin today? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate that, Dala, Metere.
Thank you. We appreciate that, Dierla, Mesere.
Thank you so much. Okay. Um. Yonis, is OJ around?
Uh, most definitely she should be, yeah. Um, Wada OJ. Yeah, she's, she's, she, she did give it back.
This is awesome. Uh, Wada OJ, take over. Yeah, this is the time for a closing prayer. Go ahead.
All that glory must be to the Lord. For he is worthy of our praise. No man should be glory to the Lord. All that glory must be. All that honor must be. All that glory must be to the Lord. We are saying, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, my Lord. We are saying, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, my Lord. Father, indeed, we are saying, thank you for all you have done in our life today. For your presence in our midst. From the beginning of this damn hall meeting to the end, you are faithful God. You came in and showed for whom you are. We thank you for what you are doing in the land of Canada for us. You in name us from bad to good name. You delivered us from the iniquity of the past miserable people we don't know that we are dealing with. You grace us by your blood you shed on the cross of Calvary. Because you saw space acting in us in Canada. I really want to bring a better name that Canada would stand strong. Father, we have no word of our own. All we can say is thank you. From now, rep to the admin, for all the members, we say thank you. For those that came today to honor our invitation, Father, we say thank you. For APM, oh Lord. For all the cabinet members, we say thank you, Jehovah. Chukwakababa, we say thank you for the land of Biafra land. For our angels, for providing for each and every one of us, we say thank you. They came to destroy themselves, not us. But because you are the Alpha and the Omega, your word is A and amen. You have proclaimed that the miracle of this last end of this world that Biafra will surely come. We have been seeing the signs and wonders of your name. Indeed, Biafra is here. And I thank you, Almighty Father in heaven, who have been preserving your own, who have been watching over our movements, who have been doing, um, doing, on things that people cannot see, what spiritual and physical it is only you that is what is A and amen. No man born of a woman can take your glory. We return every glory to your name tonight. Father, this thing that we did here today is a remarkable one. You will use it to move mountains all over the world. And push shame that does that thought that they have gotten what they want. Turn everything around for our good in the mighty name of Jesus Christ's name. Almighty Father of Israel. I am that I am that I am. Whatever they are going, doing all kinds of, you can assure it doesn't move us. Because we know that God that we are serving is a living God, is a faithful God. Your two sons that in captivity, but I know that you are there with them. You are doing extremely abundant what the man or a woman can think or see. At the end, they will come out victoriously. Thank you for those you are using. Thank you for Information Minister. Thank you for the media teams, despite the propaganda flying around. The truth will never die. You say we shall always stand on the truth, only the truth that will set us free. We are grateful tonight. May your name be glorified. We cover every resources, our account of breeding, multiplied million fold in the mighty name of Jesus. Even our lawyers have done it. All the law firm, we soak them with the blood of Jesus Christ. Have your way, Almighty Father. As we are living, we are living out of your presence. We ask, oh Lord, be with us, those that are going to work today. Surprise them. We that are going to have Christ. Be with us, put that tonight. That at the end, your name will be glorified forever and ever. This we pray to Christ our Lord. In Jesus' name.
Ah, Honorable Bishop, are you here? Our sister.
Sister Chi.
US Rep Merenkeya registered what at us Oku Nyetineki that he is among eh, 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 you know, he know God too. Wada, I don't know you are so much spiritual enlightened like this. So you see, we Biafrans are completely.
We are spiritual.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Devo.
Wow. Canada name is Niki.
Yeah. But Canada is, I, Honorable Bishop, Information. How do, how do you see, like, Canada is more lively now? They even have sisters.
Oh, yes.
Because they are no longer bringing their widows mate. I go APM for dissent.
My Canada have been bonded.
Deliverance. They have been delivered.
That's our Reverend Sister in the house. We also have a Reverend Father.
Canada's Requeme, oh, hey.
Sister, Sister.
Thank you, Sister Maya.
Honorable Kasimia, I can lay lamb.
The recording has stopped.
Honorable Kasimia, I can lay a la sister Yunis.
Yes.
More grace.
Well, it's them, ma, more grace, more grace. Yeah, they did, they did awesome. It's right. And Sister Yunis, see, but I lay a la money.
Because Masimbe say, wa, was that your story, Emito?
This meeting is being recorded. The recording has stopped.
Honorable Information Minister.
Yeah, we are waiting to, I'm trying to get Honorable Betty to take us offline. That's why I'm stopping the recording. So I see that, uh, when I know one go house, go sleep. We, we try to.
That video I sent to you.
Yeah.
That video I sent to you. You, would you like to share it with Biafrans?
I will try to post it on, uh, on X, whether they will allow it to go with the graphics.
I tell you, that was how they, that was how they murdered the Khan Chairman, not his chapter, Pastor Andimi. And they posted it, they snapped it and they posted it.
Imagine.
And I kept the pictures since twenty twenty. There was a lot of those pictures. I could not watch them anymore. I deleted some. I just left this one for a day like this, a time like this. And what is going on right now? The presidency has summoned the news.
Khan Chairman. That is the Khan Chairman.
Khan, Khan chapter, yeah, not his chapter.
Okay.
That man is a pastor, not his chapter.
Hmm.
That was how they murdered him.
Wow.
The story was there. The story was there. They were following. They needed five hundred million from, from Khan, from the Christian community. They tried and they did not, they even brought out the man to come and speak to the community. The man came in captivity and he spoke begging, begging. But he knew already that they will not release him. They kidnapped him on his way. He was going to go and see his family in Michika. So they kidnapped him along a mid degree, Bonum, uh, I think just mid degree road that way. And that was it. So they've been kidnapping. The other one is a Reverend Father we know, Father Archie in Mina, Diocese, Catholic priest. They went for him, they killed him and burnt him alive. So this has been happening. And today, the news we're hearing featuring in is that the presidency gathered all the Christians, Christian pastors, pastors. I don't know whether he was whistling them or whatever they are trying to come out with. Then last week Friday, we saw the Catholic Bishop of Sokoto Diocese mounted. They, they are dressed in, um, yes, in his socks, eh, car socks, mounted the, the, the royal horse or the royal horse going to see this Emia of Sokoto. Because that is his diocese and the Muslims were cheering him up. They're trying to pull up something to cover what is going on via right now. They are just trying to do that. This is the same Catholic priest that was almost lynched. He escaped from his parish and his house and part of the church was burnt. Father Kuka, I'm talking about Father Kuka.
Yeah, uh, is the other big guy. Nigeria is fraught now, scam. What do you expect? They can do whatever they want to do. So don't mind them. They, they can't pull the word, uh, any longer. Because we have exposed them, you know, people don't know the significance of what we are doing, especially going to Washington. See this Washington DC, you might think that they are slow, they are not listening, they are.